In the presence of a quorum, we will have one member late who's on their way back from Newton right now, so, depending on how the road conditions are. Franny may or may not make it. So, anyway, all right. As we, as we begin every meeting, we open with, with citizens' concerns. And if there's anyone who has any citizens' concerns that's not just on the agenda tonight, please feel free to come forward and, and let us know what's on your mind. Okay, all right, well, you're just putting your coat away, right Herman? I don't want to short you here. All right. Okay, then, seeing none, we'll proceed. All right. Next up is the chairman's update. Happy New Year, everyone. It's the first meeting of calendar 2015, and usually, unusually, it's been almost a month since our last selectmen's meeting, so pardon me if this is longer. First, I'd like to take this moment to say that six years ago, you took a chance and elected a relative unknown to the Board of Selectmen. It was the height of financial crisis, and I ran to lend my business acumen to help the town through it. And we did get through it, as evidenced by our continued AAA bond rating. Three years later, you reaffirm my representation when you re-elected me. And of the course of my two terms, I've made many friends in town. I've learned tremendous amount about the intricacies of government, both state and local. I'm still impressed at the level of dedication that the town staff provides through your tax dollars. I'm also very impressed with the number of citizens who volunteer their expertise and time, their time to make our town a better place to live. Acting continues to be a leader in the state on many initiatives: health, education, civility, transportation, green efforts, and I'm proud to have been part of this effort. Together, I feel we've made a significant difference in the lives of our community. As much as serving as a selectman has been gratifying, I believe we need new ideas and new energy on the board. Therefore, I will not be seeking reelection to the board. Consider it a self-imposed term limit. I have enjoyed my time and reached many of the goals for bettering the town. Simply put, I want to thank you for your opportunity to have me serve. And now for more real business. The Selectmen and the FinCom had the opportunity to review the town budget this past weekend, department by department, and I have to say that I think this is a good budget. Next, the schools group will review their budget, and after that, we'll be able to face the citizens at town meeting with budget confidence. As last calendar year closed out, the sitting governor, DeVal Patrick, indicated that there was a statewide revenue shortfall, and that he would have to cut back on the fiscal 2015 monies that he promised the municipalities. The town and the schools are trying to determine what impact this might have on our current budget, but we've already heard positive things from the new governor, Mr. Baker, and the legislature, but nothing firm. We'll keep you all posted. And with that, I turn it over to the town manager for the operational update. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First thing I'd like to announce is that Heather York has returned to be the Director of Nursing once again. Back in, in October, you know, when we were getting ready for a special town meeting, and also trying to start doing some succession planning, because as you know Doug, Doug Halli, it will be retiring this October, we were trying to figure out how we're going to deal with all these, you know, changes in leadership. And so with that kind of succession planning in mind, we reached back out to Heather to see if she would, any way would like to return to be the Director of Nursing. And I'm pleased to say that she accepted she is back as of the, a week ago, Monday, the 5th. And as you know, she worked very hard to make that agency one of the top 25% of the agencies in the US, and very happy to say Heather has now, now returned back to the helm of the nursing service. Similar to what the chair was talking about, on January 8th, one of his first official acts as the new governor, Governor Baker, released $100 million of Chapter 90 funds that Governor Patrick had withheld. And because of that, our, the town's allotment of Chapter 90 funds, which are funds that can only be used for highway purposes such as paving sidewalks, things like that, our allocation has been increased from 685,300 to 1,027,950. So, very, very good news, and, and will certainly help Corey York and Dicky Waite work on, on needed, needed highway projects. Couple reminders, the Mass Municipal Association annual meeting is January 23rd and 24th. If you haven't signed up, but you're interested, I think the best way to do that right now would be to basically write it to yourself and, and get us the, a copy of your, your submittal, and we'll get you reimbursed. Also, February 6th, which I think is a Friday morning at 7:30, Minuteman Tech is having their annual breakfast for Selectmen Finance Committee members and town managers to, I think, reveal their proposed FY16 budget. And once again, if you're interested, let me know, and I will, I will get you signed up for that. Finally, we've been in some discussions with Mount Cavali Church. It's hard to believe, but our three-year agreement for the, the parking spaces for the shuttle is, is actually expires at the end of this month. They were a little reluctant to renew, primarily because they weren't super happy with the snow removal efforts in, in the parking lot. We've countered with a proposal that the minister is going to be taken back to his, his church council, but hopefully he'll at least keep that a viable option for at least the next six months or so, while we can see what, what the impacts of the, of the train station are, and whether we can find any municipal property that could be, be located for a, for a satellite shuttle, shuttle parking. And that's my report.
All right. Well, thank you very much. All right. I'm going to read the legal notice here. It's scheduled for 7:10, and I guess we're within spitting distance. By the time I finish reading here, we should be at 7:10. The Acton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on January 12th, 2015, at 7:10 PM in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room in Town Hall for 72 Main Street Acton for an alleged over-serving incident on November 23rd, 2014, at the Makaha Restaurant, 255 Great Road, Acton, Mass. The documentation concerning this public hearing can be inspected before the public hearing at Town Hall during normal business hours. So, I, there we go. I looked up to see, and you weren't there. All right. Good evening, gentlemen. Please introduce yourself for the TV audience, and, and do your presentation.
Good evening, Deputy Chief Rich Burrows.
Do, do they have to be sworn in?
If it's a public hearing, I would advise for the ministry to be sworn in, so that's a requirement that's certainly best.
All right. Can't, can't hurt.
Good evening, Detective Renshaw for the Acton Police Department.
All right. You got your swearing-in papers?
And we're also going to have Officer John Collins from the Acton Police Department possibly give testimony tonight.
All right.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm that you'll tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth? So, help you God.
I do.
All right. Thank you. Take it away, gentlemen.
Mr. Chair, I have Detective Renshaw with us here tonight to present a possible over-serving at the Makaha Restaurant on November 23rd, and we might hear testimony from Officer John Collins during the course of the presentation. Sorry, Renshaw?
Thank you, Deputy. To the board, just want to bring to your attention the procedural history that brought us here tonight, dating back to the hearing that was held here on May 5th of 2014. The Makaha was ordered, following a hearing, to retrain their staff in alcohol servers training, and paid restitution in the sum of $320 to the Acton Police Department because we had two officers present that evening. That evening, a hearing was held relative to an over-serving event that took place March 29th of this year. And that was the, the board determined that there was a violation, there was an over-serving, and that was the penalty met, that was rendered out to the Makaha on that night. Following that, the, the hearing was on May 5th. On May 20th, there was another over-serving incident at the Makaha, a second over-serving incident, in which there was a hearing held by this board on July 28th of 2014. Flowing from that hearing, the Makaha was ordered to surrender their liquor license for a period of three days, and install and maintain a working video surveillance system, and certify to the Board of Selectmen that such system was operational within two weeks of the hearing date. On August 19th, the board received a letter from the Makaha stating that they had in fact installed a four-channel video surveillance system, and that it was working. Again, this is pursuant to the May 20th over-serving incident. Tonight, we're here to bring to the board's attention a likely third over-serving violation. The incident took place on Sunday, November 23rd, at about 5:17 in the afternoon. That's when the Acton Police received a call. Officers that responded to the call were Officer Muse, who's not present tonight, and Officer Collins, who is. They were dispatched to Makaha for a report of an intoxicated male being belligerent and harassing the other patrons. Upon the arrival of Officer Muse, who was the first officer on the scene, he was directed to the lounge area where there was, where the, the male party was located. Officer Muse readily determined that this party was intoxicated due to the physical characteristics that he exhibited: slurred speech, strong odor of alcohol, his eyes were bloodshot and glassy, and he was unsteady on his feet. The subject needed to be escorted out of the lounge by Officer Muse, where he was eventually brought outside, and then at that particular time, Officer Collins arrived. And if the board would like to hear direct testimony from Officer Collins, he is here tonight. Officer Collins?
Push the button. There you go.
How about now?
Yep.
Okay.
Officer, do you want to raise your right hand, please?
Sure.
Do you solemnly swear to, or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in this matter?
I do. Okay. I'll reiterate what Inspector Renshaw stated. I was the second officer on scene that, on scene that evening. The, the party was identified as Chris Como. Raymond Chang, who was the manager, was the reporting party to this incident. I arrived, Officer Muse, which I'm reading from his report, was already outside with Mr. Chris Como. And at that point, I determined that he was intoxicated, and we were making arrangements for him to either be placed in protective custody, or have a person come and take responsibility from him, for him. But at that point, the original call of him being belligerent and harassing, his demeanor pretty much escalated at that point. So, Officer Muse then took him into protective custody and transported him back to the station.
Officer Collins, how long, did he take a breathalyzer immediately upon being brought back to the station, or was there a delay?
There was a delay.
How long of a delay?
Two hours.
When he eventually did take a breathalyzer, do you know what the reading was?
Again, according to Officer Muse's report, he was a 181, .181.
And your training experience, the years of being a police officer, what does that .181 breathalyzer reading indicate to you?
It's twice, over twice the legal limit to operate a motor vehicle in the Commonwealth.
Did Officer Muse locate any sales slip or material from the Makaha in the defendant's property?
He did.
What was that?
I think, I believe it was $19.50, sales receipt for $19.50 in the course of two hours, of Mr. Como being there. I think it was 2:44 to...
Thank you. Did, was there any reference in Officer Muse's report, do you recall, as what that subject had consumed at the Makaha that evening prior to us being called?
I'm sorry, one more time?
Was there any reference in Officer Muse's report stating what the, the subject that was taken into protective custody, as to what he consumed at the Makaha?
Yes. I believe he consumed at least two scorpion bowls for one, which is, I don't, it doesn't have an exact amount, but I assume, I don't assume, but for one, could be anywhere between 12 ounces to, I don't know what the size of a scorpion bowl for one is, but he consumed two at that point.
And does his report also indicate that he was served a third scorpion bowl, but it was taken away because the defendant at that point in time exhibited signs of intoxication?
Yes. Again, that was taken away by Mr. Chang. He, he had quote-unquote "cut him off" at that point.
Did you have any occasion to speak to Mr. Chang during your interactions with the defendant, uh, the subject?
I did not. No.
We have nothing, other than the fact that the, thank you, Officer Collins.
Thank you.
From the police report submitted by Officer Muse, and again, he's unavailable, there was indications that Mr. Chang did try to call for a ride. The subject was very combative. He refused Mr. Chang's efforts to provide transportation, refused a cab. A cab was called, but again, the subject, due to his condition, or for whatever reasons, did not avail himself of the cab opportunity, and Mr. Chang did, did eventually call us, which prevented him from driving, thankfully. Essentially, that would be the facts of the case. If the board has any other questions, we'd be happy to entertain.
All right. Thank you. Board members, questions? For, I know we're going to have Mr. Chang also speak, but I don't know if they have any questions for the police officers, or do you want to wait until we've heard from Mr. Chang? Wait, okay. All right, Mr. Chang. You've heard obviously Officer Collins's testimony here.
Okay.
Perhaps you can help us out. Oh, I'm sorry. That's right.
I ask you to raise your right hand too, sir. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in this matter?
The truth, the whole truth. Thanks. Okay, I appreciate, um, um, okay, first of all, I'm trying to say that this is not a violation at all, because before, before I called the police, before I called the, the local police, I tried so hard to make sure this subject doesn't operate vehicles. And, um...
Is somebody from the...
Okay, on that Sunday, when I go in, when I came in around 3:30, I was sitting, I was, I was making drink right in front of that subject. He was sitting right in front of me, just right there. And I, you know, when I, when I come in, he was already have the second drinks, which is, he's drinking. And then he asked me a lot of question, you know, deal with the, oh, how you make Mai Tai, how you make Zombie, and things like that. And then, by the time he almost finished the second drink, he, just a regular talk. I mean, he asked me, "Oh yeah, maybe, maybe I stick with the scorpion bowl, because I like scorpion bowl." Okay, so around 4, so maybe half hour later, 4, a little bit after 4, he ordered a third drink. Right after I make him the third drink, he, he take a few sip, and he, he leaned on to his right. There's, there's a couple enjoying the, you know, the football and things like that. And I saw the couple was rolling, you know, rolling their eyes. That means I figured they don't want him to bother them. So, I talked to the subject, I said, "Can you leave them alone? You know, don't talk to them, you know, don't bother them, because they having dinner and trying to enjoy the football game." And he said, "Okay," blah, 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 things like that. And then maybe five minutes, five more, five minutes later, he did again. So, at that time, I find out something wrong with this subject. So, I said, "No," I took the drink away. I said, "I think you have enough." And I tried to offer him three glasses of water at that time, a total of three glasses of water. And I said, "Are you driving?" He said, "No, I'm not driving." But I find out he have a key there. It's a BMW key. So, I, so I know he's driving. And, and this time, I said, "Why don't I call you a cab?" You know, and he said, "Okay, go, go call a cab," blah, 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 things like that. And I called a Shuntside cab, and which they come about 20 minutes later. And when the driver come into the restaurant and say, "Who, who called the cab?" I said, "Oh, this guy." And he said, "No, I didn't call the cab. I want you to call a cab." I said, "You know, what can I do?" I said, "Okay, you want a cab?" I called a cab then. So, the Officer Mills and Officer Collins came, and they, they put him, you know, they, they just, they asked him to, to walk outside. And then they spent like 10, 15 minutes talking outside. And maybe another 20 minutes, Officer Collins came in and said, "Yeah, we, we take, we take him away, and everything's fine, and you did a good job." And that's it. And then two hours later, and Officer Mills come back and say, asked for the, like, information, ID, and things like that, and said, "What happened?" And, and he also took, took pictures on, on the, you know, the bowl. It's like, basically it's full. He take a few sip, because took it away. I just make sure everything. I show the Officer Mills that I called, what time I called the police, what time I called the, the cab. So, the whole thing is, that's what, that's what happened. I think I did my best. I mean, what else I can do? When I, when I took the cost, when I took the, the four hours, what do you call it, the tips program, there's a lecture right there, exactly told me the same thing. He said, "When you find out a customer intoxicated, shut them off, take the drinks away, and make sure they are not operating any vehicles," which I did it. And then I arranged the transportation for him, and he refused it. I still did not let him go. I called the police. I mean, what else you can ask me for you to, to do it? Plus, plus, plus the drinks. I served him two, exactly two, and a little bit two drink, and that's not over served over three hours. And, and also, and also, when you look at, you know, I'm not saying like, um, the, the BAC, the BAC reading, when he said he, he, he blow the, the meetings around 8 o'clock. And that reading was 1.81. The information that I show you was three hours ago. That mean he was .22, from, from, you know, according to every 40 minutes, minus .01. That mean he was like .22 on, he's a young man of 170 pounds, I think. And .22 is like a pretty coma, passed out. And, but he was walking out with Officer Mills with no help, and spent like 10, 15 minutes talking outside. So, I don't know how many drink he had before. I can't tell when, you know, because he was showing very normal when I talked to him. But once, as soon as I find out he have, he so intoxicated, I grabbed the drink away. Even he's being a wise guy. I mean, he being a wise guy, and, and he, this is, this is young man in a, in a 20. I don't want him to go to get a DUI or something like that, just to ruin his future. But I don't know. I mean, I did my best. And when you say, when you say it's a violation, over-serving, this is not a violation. This is two drink in three hours.
Okay. Thank you. Katie, you with first up?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chang. Can you describe for me what's in a scorpion bowl for one?
Sure. I wrote down here too, for myself too. Okay, one, one part of brandy, one part of rum, two part of orange juice, and two part of sour mix, and then the, the syrups over the ice. And, and the volume of the glass is one ounce, no, half ounce more than a regular beer is, 12 and, 12 and a half.
Okay. But it's got brandy and rum in it. Okay. Thank you.
Janet, did you have a question?
Well, I, I have a question just to follow up on that, because I am not a, a drink mixer.
No, that's fine, yeah.
My brother was that. But when you say one part, one part, two parts, two parts, that means that the brandy and the rum are the only alcoholic components, and they're substantially diluted.
Correct.
So, 12 ounces of the 12 ounces, more, much more than half is, is non-alcoholic, or...
No, when you consider drinks, that is two, is it two, I think one and a half ounce of a drink. One and a half ounce alcohol is considered a drink.
Okay, okay.
So, there's, it's only like two ounce.
Okay, okay. But, and, well, I see the, the bowl there. It's sizable. I, you know, I, the only question I have, I think that you did the right thing. I think that this customer unfortunately is one of those ugly drunks. You know, there are people who are drunks are happy, and yeah, they're dangerous on the road. This guy was ugly, which flagged you to the, the fact that he was probably going to be a danger on the road as well, which is a good thing. It wasn't pleasant for you. But the only question I would have is whether, you know, you've suggested or indicated that in your view, there were no signs that he was getting inebriated. So, my only question would be if, based on experience, based on the alcoholic content of the scorpion bowl that you make, is it your observation that a man of his size and whatever, who's not eating apparently, and sitting there for three hours, can consume two and a half scorpion bowls and still function, and not be legally, you know, be so inebriated that he's, he's legally drunk? You know, that's, I don't know if you have any experience. And then my other question has to do with the camera. Did, did you, were able, were you able to get?
I have the camera here, and that, and then one of the letters from my technician. I mean, he, he can tell you what happened to that camera. That, well, not that, that...
Okay. Well, we, yeah, we were trying to, we can't read and ask questions.
But, but, I'm trying to, I'm trying to answer your question. The first question is, right, I'm trying to find, I mean, I don't, I don't know if a good bartender or anybody who can tell anybody had been drinking before they walk in the bar though. That is my point. I've been, I have, I've been to the bartender, the restaurant business for like 30 years. People walk in, they talk to you, they act normal. And then until they saw something, you, you kind of alert, okay, you know, you know they are over drink. But when they walk in to order the drink, you really, I mean, honest to tell you, you don't know, you really don't know they've been drinking or not from somewhere else.
Unless they really smell.
Well, the bar, the bar already have alcohol smell sometimes, so it's, no.
Yes, Katie?
Well, that's it for now. Yeah.
So, my follow-up question is, if he hadn't been rude to those other customers, would you have let him keep drinking the third scorpion bowl, and would you let him have walked out of the bar? Because that's my bigger concern here.
No, once he act different, once he, he interrupted the other customer, I tell him to stop. If a good customer, they know what I want. They will stop bothering the other people. But he keep doing that. That means something bothered him. He is intoxicated.
So, you think that was the only sign that he was intoxicated?
At that point...
I mean, if he was that, he blew a .18 over two hours later. And according to your calculations, that means he was significantly intoxicated. And I have to trust...
And also, yeah.
...the police breathalyzer machinery.
I have no idea.
They calibrated it, and they did it twice, and he blew a .18 both times. So, in that case, he was quite intoxicated at the time that he was at your restaurant. So, I guess I'm asking, was the only sign in your opinion that he was drunk, that he was bothering one of your other customers?
Yes.
Okay. Because I'm pretty sure that the tips, that the safe serve training teaches identifying through a variety of signs. And I'm very concerned that that was the only reason that stuck out. And if he, if there hadn't been another customer there, they hadn't rolled their eyes, that he would have walked out of there, he would have kept drinking that third drink, and he would have gotten in a car and killed himself or somebody else. That's what I'm most concerned about.
Well, every time when I shut people off, not, not, not only they are intoxicated, when they make a lot of noise, when they, when they do something like bothering the other customer, not, not even they are drunk, I, I still shut them up. I, I, you know, because this is, they, they bothering the other customer, and it's not my, my way to run business. I don't want the other people, because, "Oh yeah, this guy make too noise." Same thing, we have a jukebox there. Someone, some young people come in, he say, "Oh yeah, yeah, turn it up." When no one there, I let them to turn it up a little bit, you know, then the volume. But when, when some people come in, they don't let... But when, when some people come in, they don't like the loud music, I do that. I, you know, I turn it off. Not only intoxicated, I shut them up, if they make some noise, if they, you know, act differently, I shut them up too.
Janet?
This is actually a question for the police. It has to do with, well, maybe you know, it's, you said it's a four-channel system. Does that mean that it has cameras in four different locations that's collecting film in one spot? Because I see the report of the technician, that the recording, anything that was recorded on this, the day of this incident, has been taped over. So it's, there's one, there's one belt that collects all of the images?
No, this is four, four pictures, four different corner. The four corners cover the whole lounge.
But it, there's no, it's all goes into one place, and then, and then it all gets recorded over. It's not, I'm just, I'm just wondering if, you know, if, knowing that there was an incident involving the police, if you know that there's a spot that's recording, if you could just sort of say, okay, we've got to turn that off and keep the rest of the system working.
No, no, I can't do that. It's automatically recorded, the whole...
Because obviously, yeah, it would have been helpful, because you, you said you showed up at, he was already at the bar. Is that what you said?
When I came in, yeah.
So you didn't see him when he came in? Did you talk to any, whoever was on duty?
No, I didn't. When I came in, he talking to me. He talking, he talked to me like for half hour before he ordered the next drinks.
He was normal, and...
Yeah, 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 right, right.
So he was not, he was not known to you, he wasn't a regular?
No, no, no.
He wasn't, so you didn't really know what to expect of him?
No, no, I have, we have like a formal conversation. He asked me a drink, because, you know, he's sitting right in front of me making drinks. And he said, oh, yeah, how do you make this, how do you make that? I answer him, you know, things like that. Everything is fine for like the next, I will say 40 minutes, until he ordered the next drinks. Because he leaned over and trying to talk to the couple on, you know, on his right. So basically, I, you know, I don't know what to do. If you say this is a violation, I mean, should I call a cab, or not to call a cab? I mean, I call, I call the police because I need help. I never think about that, I, oh, you have to come to a hearing in return, really.
Peter?
Have you, Mr. Chen, have you seen the police report that they wrote for this incident?
Yeah, two weeks later, I, yeah.
Okay.
Because when, when, on the day, Officer Mills asked me, you know, he come back, get all the information and everything like that. He said, your video is on? I said, yes. Can you, can I? He also asked for, I asked for a, a copy. Yeah, I said, I can. But I said, I cannot. I have to ask someone. You let me know. I can ask someone to make you a copy. And until then, maybe two, I will say probably 15 days later, and Officer Hogan, he came in, he said he want a copy. So I said, okay, I get a copy. That's why I called the technician, and he, he bring the whole thing home and work on it.
So, so you didn't think about trying to save it after the police came? I've seen the letter.
Yeah, that's a good question, too. My technician advised me, if anything happened, maybe a little argument or whatever, something you find out he probably intoxicated, and they walk, they laugh or whatever, this is a backup, they call. It costs, say, $70 to back up.
Yeah.
Let's say, let's say something happened tonight.
Right.
And I suspect something will happen, I suspect probably they went out and the police stopped them or something. He advised me to back that up for that night. He can say for that, a specific night. If you guys need it, so I don't have, you know, so the machine won't override.
Okay, but you didn't do that, that night?
Because I didn't, well, yeah, that's, yeah.
Okay.
That's for the, you know, for me, for the future.
Okay.
For protection.
All right. So you say, the police came about quarter, 5:15 PM?
Right.
And you were there since 4 o'clock?
3:30.
3:30, okay. And you say you had a long conversation with this gentleman?
Yeah, before, before I give him the third drinks.
Okay. And, but the police, the police were pretty clear, as soon as they got there at 5:15 and started talking to him, that he was intoxicated. He smelled of liquor, he had glassy eyes, he was unsteady on his feet. You're saying you didn't notice any of that?
I did. That's why, that's why I shut him off. Which is 4:04, when he paid the check, the invoice was 4:21. I make him to pay the check. In 1950, I mean, how many drink you can afford, we have a 1950, and the tab is like three drinks there. I mean, all the document, evidence.
Okay.
I called, I called a Sunshine Cab, I called this one, and later on, I called the police. Really, when I called. I'm not, I'm not trying to beg it, that's true, just like I said, I tell everything is like, I try my best, and I did everything that I could to, to save the young man's future. I don't want him to get in DUI and something like that. And it was also for my, for my protection.
All right. I have a couple of questions for you, Mr. Cheng. I'm using your, your sheet here, your be responsible about drinking sheet?
Yeah, that's what I get from the website.
The, it says, drink is a 1 1/4 ounce or shot glass, and you, this particular drink, especially based on the price, it's a $9.75 drink for one.
No, 6.50. 6.50.
Oh, he had three, I see. Because you only had two marked off on the, on your guest check there, there's only...
No, that's three, that's three. Two, two is from the previous bartender. So every time we change, we change shape, they two, and then I come in and make another one.
Okay. All right. So this, basically, this drink is comprised of a shot of rum, a shot of brandy...
And a shot of brandy, yeah.
And, and then juices to go with it.
Correct.
According to your chart there, one drink is one shot. So that means every drink that you gave him is two shots, or two drinks. So by serving him two scorpion bowls for one, he's now at four drinks. And at four drinks, if he weighs 180 pounds, he's at the legal limit.
I know, but one, one of my shot is 0.75, 0.75 ounce, it's not the whole ounce. So you're talking about 150.
I, I won't even get into what, what that means from a marketing standpoint.
Okay.
That's, you're a little misrepresenting if that's the case, but that's not, that's not the issue why we're here. Obviously, if, if this gentleman, and I'm assuming you highlighted the 160, 180 is because that's his approximate size. If in fact, that's the case, and he blew, blew a, excuse me, blew a 2, 21, or we assume over 2, because two hours later, he blew a 1.181, then he, he had to have had at least that many drinks prior to. He had to at least have had four alcoholic beverages or more...
I think so, yes.
...in order to have that.
Correct.
And you're saying to us that you didn't see anything that would indicate that he had already had, essentially, what was the legal limit, perhaps over the legal limit, when you served him your first drink?
Because I honest to tell you, I, some people don't show, really, they, when I, when I talk to him, he asked me question, I answer him. It's like a normal person, believe me. And then until I find out something wrong, you know, I start taking his drink away, I, you know, I did whatever I can to, to stop, you know, further, you know, damage.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I mean, you...
The, the other question is, I don't know, I, having not taken the tips training, I don't know what the recommendation is with food. But it seems to me that each time that we've seen you here, it's always people who are just drinking, not ordering any food. And, and personally, I would think that that would be a good sign that there's a problem. If somebody comes in to a Chinese restaurant and doesn't order any food, and just orders alcohol, then, then that should be a tip off. That should be a clue that there's a, either a problem or potential problem. Keep close eye on that. Rather than offer to buy him, get him a cab, perhaps you offer him food.
No, I, I know that. Because I told, I told all my employee, I said, I've been here enough. I know, I know I come here all the time, and, and we are being watched out and things like that. And as a matter of fact, because of this, we should be, you know, the employee, the McCann restaurant, is more careful or more alert than anyone else, because we have, we doesn't, we don't have a good reference or good history. You know, we do that. That's why everybody was so alert.
The...
Any, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
The, the other, the other issue I have is with this, this video request. I'm not sure that this is a good explanation of why you have the problem. I honestly think that, I know the last time during the summer, you had indicated that the DVR wasn't working, and hadn't been working for a while, which in itself was a violation of the previous board...
That's why I guess I suspended him for three days.
I know, I understand that. So, and, and I appreciate the fact that that made you go out and get it fixed. However, a system that overrides itself, or doesn't allow you to back anything up, limits what you can use it for. And so I would say that that's, that's the letter of what they asked you to do, but not the intent of what they asked you to do.
Okay.
What they're looking for, and it's good for you. It's not...
No, I absolutely understand.
It's not necessarily for us.
No, no, I understand, I understand.
It's good for you. Because if some occurrence happens where you have to defend yourself in court, having the video as evidence is, is a very powerful tool for you. So...
And that's what this little guy do.
Mm-hmm.
I was wondering, when I read that he was hesitant to take a cab, and ultimately his car was towed, if he had taken a cab, would his car have been towed? And what is the cost of getting your car back from being towed?
You can't ask him.
Well, he might have had people complain. Well, no, what I thought people...
Because when, okay, I...
If he had taken a cab home, would the car have just sat there until he came out?
At that time, when, when I saw, when I saw the tow truck came to tow the car, some customer at the bar, I don't know, is legal, they tow something, some vehicle from the private property, it's not right. That's what people said. And, and I don't want to interrupt with that, because that's not my business. But if the police want to tow the car away from my restaurant because he's intoxicated. But usually, when people get PC after a few hours, I don't know how, how they get released, or I don't know. They come to pick up the car the next day or whatever. I have no idea. That's not my concern. But I don't know if, I don't know if I answered your question.
No, I just, it made me wonder about the suggestion to get a cab, and when people say, no, sorry, too expensive, it just made me think they might be useful to let them know what it will be if they refuse, and their car is towed, it might cost them a lot more. And I was just wondering about those relative costs.
In my experience, you're not the most logical when you're that drunk. So I don't know that...
Well, he was logical enough to say, yeah.
Very helpful.
Well, no, we turned on the cab so we could get the blue light special. You didn't hear that part. He said no to the cab, and yes to the police. So, so I, obviously, that's a good indication that somebody severely impaired. And from the questioning that the police officers did at the site, he was making little or no sense, which if, again, it was very obvious to them that he was drunk. It bothers me that it's not obvious to you or your bartender, Kenny. That, that is what concerns me the greatest. If you have no sense of when somebody is impaired, then the likelihood that this, that you'll be back here again is great. So that's one of the issues that I have. Another issue I have, and I know you're concerned about this kid being picked up for DUI, or I'm concerned about he gets on the road and kills someone.
Exactly, that's what my concern is.
That's more, my, I don't care. He, he put himself in this position. He's old enough to drink, I'm assuming, we haven't gone there.
But he's also...
If he's old enough to drink, then he's old enough to be responsible.
He's also a young man in his early 20. I don't see a young man in his 20 and get into DUI, and that is completely ruin his future. I know that. I know you just mentioned about if he get out and kill someone, that even worse. That's, that's my, that's my key. I don't want him to get his hand on the wheel. That's the bottom line.
Yes, Franny?
This is what concerned me when I read it, was that before, before you were concerned, it sounds like he might have been intoxicated to the point that he would have been dangerous leaving. And I don't know how, how you would have identified that. If you didn't see him as intoxicated, too intoxicated before the third drink was given, then, but by the amounts that he had, it sounds like he might have been dangerous to drive.
Okay, let's say, okay, let's put it this way. If I came in 3:30, and I found out he's intoxicated, I will do the same thing before I give him the third drinks. Because the point is, once I find out he's intoxicated, he act different. I exactly at the same time, I do, I shut him off. And not, not because of, oh, yeah, because he only had two drink, he can afford another two, the third drink. I didn't, I, you know, that's not my, my way to run business, though.
Any other questions, Janet?
Well, since Franny brought this question up, and I know that the police had, had somebody tow the car, somebody towed the car, it's in the police report. If it didn't, wasn't the police, was it somebody else who arranged for the towing? I, it's my understanding that towing cars is, it's expensive to get your car when it's been, been towed, once you find out where it is. So, yeah, if you want, if you want, if you think that's leverage with somebody who's drunk, just several sheets to the wind, and you can reason with him, you can tell him, oh, it's going to cost you a lot of money, once you find your car, and in your state, you're going to, you know. But anyhow, so it, you, you didn't, you weren't the ones who arranged it with somebody. It was somebody else who arranged for the towing of the car? I'm really confused about it now, and it's, it's a small issue, but, you know, it bothers me, so I've got to...
Just, just for a point of clarification, the officers did request a tow because he was the only operator, he was the only person registered to the vehicle. So by separating him from the vehicle, by taking him into protective custody, we would assume liability for that vehicle being left there unattended. So as a matter of due course, we towed the vehicle. We have a call list of three vendors that we use, whoever's next in line, they come and take it. It was then subsequently towed and inventoried pursuant to our policies. And I think the Department of Public Utilities sets the rate for the tow, so it varies depending on their location. They get the initial call out, and they get a mileage fee from the location to their tow yard. But I believe it's in the area of $110 to start out. And that's, again, regulated by the Department of Public Utilities at the flat fee statewide for any police tow. So hopefully that clarifies any of the boards.
Okay. All because the guy didn't want to stop at one drink, or, or whatever, or didn't take up drinking after you arrived at the restaurant, but anyhow.
I have a question for you folks. He blew the breathalyzer at 0.181 later on that evening. You kept him overnight. He blew another breathalyzer in the morning, I'm assuming, or you, because you're not putting him out on the street if he's down to 0.1, because then I'm going to yell at you two. But, okay, all right. So he was held overnight?
Yes, sir.
All right. And so, at what point was his car towed?
The car was towed from the scene immediately, shortly after he was transported back to police station, then arrangements were made. So it's almost like, it's contemporaneous, soon as you take someone into custody, you call for record, because, again, because we use three different numbers.
I understand.
You don't know where they're coming from.
Yep.
So you can be tied up for 15, 20 minutes, sometimes a half hour.
And then, and so then in the morning, when light dawns...
He gets noticed where his car's at.
Okay.
And then he's released.
And basically, you just boot him out the door, and it's his responsibility to find a way to go get his car back?
We, we give him the opportunity to make phone calls, to arrange transportation.
Okay.
Whatever we get to do, you know, to assist, if time allows. Sometimes we actually do transport people up to the tow yard.
Yeah. Sure, Katie?
I actually have a question for Officer Collins, if you don't mind coming back up. Officer Collins, when you arrived, was it, so at the time that you arrived, the person, the patron was out in the parking lot with Officer Mills?
Correct.
And was he very obvious, was he drunk to you? And was he very obvious, was he drunk to, did he appear drunk to you?
He, he appeared intoxicated.
Okay. And that was, how easy or not was that for you to tell?
Uh, just by the order, uh, his slurred speech, like Officer Muse's, uh, report, and glassy eyes.
Okay. So, it was pretty clear to you before he took any breathalyzer that he was intoxicated?
He, he was definitely impaired.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Which, which would be a good reason for him to refuse to take the breathalyzer. Yeah, yeah. Um, and I think that, uh, cause I saw in the report that he had asked for ice water, and I think that that was an intent to dilute the alcohol, if you will, because he, he knew. He knew. So, all right. Any other questions? Well, you'd like to give your comments?
So, I think the first thing we have to decide is whether or not this is a, a over-service violation. And I, I guess, like Mike mentioned earlier, I'm very concerned that Mr. Chang and his staff did not see any signs of intoxication besides this gentleman annoying or bothering other patrons. He was clearly severely intoxicated by the breathalyzer that he blew two hours later, um, by the fact that the officers, when they arrived, could easily tell that he was intoxicated, and frankly, by the fact that he drank two scorpion bowls and ate nothing. That's a lot of alcohol to consume. Um, if I drank that much, I would, and didn't eat anything, it would be a, a really big issue. Um, and so I'm concerned for a lot, I mean, I, I think that serving him that third scorpion bowl, to me, is definitely an over-service violation. Um, he must have been clearly intoxicated by the second one. And I'm, but I'm more concerned that he didn't seem intoxicated to the staff of the Makaha at that point. Um, and, you know, they've been here multiple times. They've had the retraining and other things, and yet it doesn't seem to be clicking. Um, and so to me, this is an over-service violation, and we can get into what the consequences of it should be if, if we all agree it is. But to me, it's pretty clear that this is over-service.
Any other observations, comments? Janet?
Yeah, I would, well, I, I'm glad that now there's a backup system, and I hope it actually gets used, because I think it would have been helpful for us and for the officers to see what was going on when he first arrived and what his condition was. I don't know if the, the, the clarity on the film would have shown that, but it would have been additional evidence and, and, and perhaps it would have borne out what you've said, Mr. Chin, which is that you, he didn't look, he didn't look inebriated, nothing was out of the ordinary, didn't sound it or smell it when he first walked in. But it's just, without that, it's actually, it makes it harder on you, uh, because the, all of the evidence, um, suggests that he was very inebriated at some point, even before the third scorpion bowl was served, because you said he took a couple of sips. And then he was so, um, sort of obnoxious that you took it away from him. So, um, I think that the two sips weren't gonna push him over the edge. He was already, he was already over the edge before that. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm concerned because this is after a, a period of time, and I don't know if it started in the time that I've been on the board since this was 2010. I'd heard that the restaurant had had some issues, but it seemed as if it had been a while. Um, and then all of a sudden, just kind of one after the other, we've been, we've been hearing about over-serving violations. Um, and it may be that, that, uh, there needs to be more rigorous training of your staff members about just the signs, and not the obvious signs where somebody's just stumbling all over himself and slurring and being obnoxious to people or whatever, or throwing up, you know. But shy of that, when somebody is clearly, uh, you need to stop serving. Uh, you, there must be some sign that you're missing and without, you know, going and peering into the person's face maybe, um, but that, that other, other bars and other, and other parts of the town have people who are able to detect it. It's not a problem. Um, or, or maybe it's just that people go to Makaha to drink. I, I don't know. And you're used to having people who just drink and don't eat. Um, and, and you need to sort of realize that, um, just having people who drink continuously and without eating is not necessarily a good thing. It's not only not a good thing for the restaurant, it's not a good thing for the people. Okay? Um, and then it's not a good thing for our town, because we have to get our police department involved. You look at what they had to do for him. They take him into custody. They have to get his car towed. They have to, you know, deal with the stuff the next morning. Um, and, and it's just a lot of rigmarole, because somebody who's, who's drunk, it's not, it's not, well, it's, it's an offense, but it's, it can be an offense, but it's not one of the more serious issues that our police department has to deal with. So, um, but it's all, comes down to, well, obviously, the individual should be exercising greater control, but he doesn't. And so the next, the next, uh, opportunity for somebody to control him is the person who's serving him. So, um, yeah, I'm not sure of what to do, but, uh, I, I don't wanna just say, just do better. Um, I don't feel as if that that's enough. I think we have to be very specific. Um, and, you know, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna be, discourage you, but I think that there's a message that needs to be driven home in a, a more, a firmer way. So, anyhow.
Anything, Peter? Nope. You don't have to. I'm not trying to force you.
I, I, I have a question for Town Council, actually. Is this a, this is a state statute that governs over-serving? What's a definition of over-serving? Just prohibits serving alcohol to-
Yeah, to someone who's visibly, visibly intoxicated. Um, it's, uh, general laws, chapter 138, I believe, section 69.
Okay.
Um, and, and while I'm up here and have the, the podium, I might as well, uh, remind you all of the standard under which you're holding the hearing. Um, unfortunately, your, the sport is fairly familiar with it at this point, but, um, it is after notice and an opportunity of the, uh, license holder to be heard, you would all need to find satisfactory proof of violation of a license condition or of a general law. Um, in this case, the board did impose certain license conditions that are in question here, as well as, um, as Mr. Berry has brought up, uh, it is a general law violation to serve someone who's visibly intoxicated. Um, so that legal standard is in chapter 138, section 64. There are various, uh, options that you have if you find a violation, including, uh, modifying a license, suspending a license, and revoking a license. Um, one other option, uh, that I found that I don't believe I've discussed with the board in the previous hearings that we've had on the subject, is the ability to require insurance, um, on behalf of the license holder. And chapter one, uh, chapter 138, section 64A states that a licensing authority can require, after a hearing for over-service in any of the previous 24 months prior to the hearing, um, may require, as a, um, condition precedent to the reinstatement of a license, that a certificate of insurance be provided to the town, um, proving that the license holder has not less than a hundred thousand dollars, uh, of insurance per person or two hundred thousand dollars for all persons. Um, but it does give the licensing authority some flexibility to determine the amount of that insurance requirement and, and whether to have that requirement at all. So, I wanted just to bring that to your attention as, uh, an additional option that I don't think we've discussed in the past.
Um, the insurance is for property insurance?
Um, I believe it says, uh, liability insurance, and I have to pull out the statute, which I have handy here on my phone.
I happen, I just happen to have the statute in my pocket.
I do. Um, certificate of insurance for liquor liability, providing security for the liability of the licensee. So, it secures, you know, their liability for, in order for someone to recover against the license holder.
If this guy had gotten in his car, because there hadn't been another patron and they had been rude-
And killed someone.
Killed somebody and the family sued the restaurant.
Precisely.
Okay.
But somebody's dead at that point. So-
Right. And that's, that therein lies one of the problems with that. All right, thank you.
Can I?
Yes.
One hundred thousand dollars per person. What person? The, the victims?
That's a minimum, yeah. So, it's, um, the statute just says, um, not less than one hundred thousand dollars to any one person. So, it's, it's coverage for any one claimant, I would assume. Um, or two hundred thousand to all persons. Um, but the limits imposed or increased under this section shall be set at the discretion of the licensing authority. So, what's provided in the statute is a minimum, not less than one thou, one hundred thousand.
Yes, Franny?
Does having that insurance protect the town or the people on the road in any way?
Yes.
It sounds to me like it just protects the restaurant from harm if someone should get hurt.
It, it arguably protects, um, anyone who is impacted adversely by the over-service if they're injured in a way that they can collect under the insurance. It is trying to prevent this situation where, um, uh, someone is injured and the, uh, person driving the car, or whatever is, is the circumstances that arrives at the injury, um, doesn't have the money to pay for any damage that is caused, either injury or property damage. Uh, someone would look to the person serving the alcohol, um, and the restaurant may also, um, claim not to have the assets to pay for that as well. So, the insurance secures and protects someone financially, um, in that event, that it, it provides them the opportunity to be able to recover in a circumstance they may not otherwise.
I, I don't feel like that's much of a punishment to, that they would be helped in that case, because the person's hurt, the person's killed.
It's if there's a potential victim.
I understand.
And they sue, they sue the restaurant, and the restaurant declares bankruptcy. They have nothing to sue them for.
I understand that, but I wanna prevent the person from becoming a victim in the first place, rather than help them.
I think our first question, like Nina said, is whether or not this is an over, is this a violation? Um, and in my opinion, like I said, I think it's a violation under the general laws Peter brought up. It's an over-service. He was visibly intoxicated to police who showed up a half hour later. How he couldn't have been visibly intoxicated to people that are supposedly tip-certified and trained in seeing this. I don't know what other level of training we can require of them. They've now taken this training multiple times and have been certified that they should be able to spot these, um, that be able to identify, um, when somebody's intoxicated. It was clear to the police that this person was intoxicated. It should have been clear to the server that this person was intoxicated. Ergo, it is an over-service violation, in my opinion.
I have, I have, I haven't had a chance to, to kind of talk about my observations. I, I make no apologies that last time you were in, uh, I voted that you should have your liquor license revoked. And I was, I was very, uh, positioned, positioned it very strongly that this is your treasure. This is the thing you make the money on, so that you need to protect it. And I'm seeing not much effort on your part to protect it. Our job here is not about the over-serving. Our job here is about public safety. And, and I know that if, if this gentleman or anyone who was served, uh, too much alcohol at your, uh, location went out and killed somebody, that, that you would feel terrible about it. However, you would not feel as terrible as that person or their family. So, it, it really, really bothers me that in, for thr, this is the third time in less than a year that you've been here defending yourself. And I think that there's some issue with that that says, to the point that Katie was making, you're not recognizing that there's an issue. And I'm not sure what to do about that. I'm also not pleased about the whole video situation. That's, that's another thing that makes me grind my teeth. So, just as a, as a go-forward, anytime you call the police, save that video. It's in your own best interest. Your insurance company may wanna see it as well. So, I know you've got backup now. Um, but I'm not, I'm still not convinced that you should have a liquor license in this town. We just put in 26 new homes, literally next door to your facility, that'll have kids. We've got apartments complex behind you and on each side of you. We've got, the school bus stops out there in the afternoon to pick up and drop off kids. My concern is that you're gonna let somebody get behind the wheel that you don't think is intoxicated, and they're gonna run over somebody's eight-year-old, and then you're gonna feel awful about it. Not as bad as, not as bad as the eight-year-old, but it's, it's, and that's my main concern. That's my main concern. We have arguably not enough liquor licenses in this town. You happen to hold one of them. We've turned businesses away from this town because they couldn't get a liquor license. And now I feel like you're mistreating this liquor license. You're treating it casually. You're treating it callously. And, and to me, I'm gonna reiterate my position from the last time, which is, fool me once, shame on you. Fool me twice, shame on me. You know, I, I think that this is a dangerous situation. I think that it is waiting for the next occurrence when you don't happen to call the police and that person goes, oh, because they only had two scorpion bowls, they get out in their car and they go cross the center line and kill someone. It's not gonna make me feel better to be able to say, I told you so. That's not what it's about. It's about the safety of the people on the road, the safety of people on the street, and the safety of the people in your facility. So, I'm sorry, I, I'm still gonna suggest that we revoke the license. I, I asked for it before. You, you guys turned me down last time. It was a four to one vote. I'm gonna say this time, you know, I said he'd be back, and lo and behold, he's back. So, do we have any recommendations?
Well, so my first recommendation is that we make a finding that under the general laws, that this is an over-service violation.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Yes, Franny?
I have a question. Since, due to car trouble, I wasn't here for the beginning of the hearing. I was thinking maybe of abstaining, but is that, I had read it completely and heard what I heard since I walked in. What would be the appropriate thing to do? I mean, I don't wanna-
It's up to you.
I think that's for Town Council to answer.
Uh, Ms. Osman, I believe that you've have, the standard under this statute is satisfactory proof. If you feel that, that you have, um, heard and read and seen satisfactory proof of violation during, uh, the public hearing and the documents you received beforehand, you may vote.
All right. So, any more discussion? Yes, Janet?
I just have a question. How, do you, do you know, do we know how long that Makaha has had the license?
Too. Too long.
Well, wise guy, yeah. I want a straight answer. I'm being serious. No, I'm just wondering how long, and has it been, has it been revoked at any time in the past? You don't know. Yeah. It's been a long time, though, right? They've always had-
These last three haven't been that long.
I mean-
Yeah, the restaurant, the Makaha restaurant been in town for nine, for forty-three years, since 1972. And it's my nineteen years since I took it over. And in, in the past nineteen years, I, I really love this town, you know, good town, good community, good neighborhood. And I know I've been here so many times, and a lot of time that I've been arguing about this. I've been defending myself with all the evidence, but seems like, you know, I, I have no success. So, bring back, bring back the first time early this year because of two friends was arguing. And fortunately, there's a state police there, and the state police came here, I appreciate that, and he testified for me. That's not because of I over-served, because of the two friend was joking. Now, they're good friends now. They, they, they back into my restaurant, being good friends. And I was fined for three hundred dollars. And the state police already said, this is not related to alcohol. And the second time, I came here, we, I refused to serve the returned customer, which is, they kept, they was there an hour ago. I refused them coming back an hour later because I know they are intoxicated. And I have a witness came here to, to testify. I have the, the document again. And I get free, I still get free, free, free day suspension because he said my, the camera's not working. he said my, the camera is not working. Now this time, I try so hard. I mean, what else you can ask me to do that if I find out someone intoxicated? Just like I said, there's no way. I mean, I don't, I don't, I can't tell anybody been drinking before, before they walk into the restaurant. That is only to tell you, I have no idea they've been drinking or not. You go ask anybody by hand, I mean, there's no way they can tell, unless they saw something. And I did, the effort I did, is, don't forget, this is the phone call I make.
Oh, because he was too drunk to.
Okay. But we're... Mr. Chen, I, no, I appreciate, I appreciate your, I got out of you that you've, you've had the restaurant for 19 years. Did the liquor license get transferred to you? Do you remember? Okay, okay. But in any event, that, no, that was really, I wanted to get a sense of just how long this liquor license had been with Makaha, is so, anyhow.
But this case, this case... Right now, we're talking about this incident, and we're talking about whether or not this was an over-service violation. There's a motion on the floor about whether or not this is an over-service.
Nina mentioned, you know, you could talk about over-service violation, you could also talk about violating conditions of an order. And now I've forgotten, I know that the last time we had a hearing, there had been the order about the camera, which clearly had not been complied with, and that was taken care of in August. But now, I don't remember what our last order required. I assume we wanted a working camera.
Fix it, yes.
And then the trouble is, is that the camera's working, but the recording got recorded over, which kind of defeats the whole purpose of having the camera. I, you know, I don't know if, you know, if we were to say to not revoke, you know, do we have to get very specific about the condition of the camera? That you have to have the, well, you have to either have a backup, or I would rather have, you know, some system where there's, well, it's not, you don't just stick it on when you need a backup, but it's there. You automatically have a backup somewhere that you can't, you can't override at all.
Well, I think later we can talk about what the conditions or what the punishment might be.
No, I'm talking about, there were two, I thought there were two bases for us to define a violation.
Right, so did he violate?
They're talking about the over-serving, I'm talking about the conditions of our required order.
But he had a camera, which is what we required. So as of this time...
I was talking, so I didn't hear what you said.
Sorry, he had a camera, which is what we required last time. So I don't know that we can say that he violated it because he did have a camera, which is why I feel like the violation here is a violation of over-service, not a violation of...
But Nina, you said you thought that there were some issues with the conditions, the conditions of compliance with the conditions of our order.
No, I raised that as an issue for you all to determine. I'm not in the position to make any findings myself, but that's a potential issue here for you to decide.
Okay. Franny has something.
Yes, Franny.
Answer to your question, one, either the last time or the time before that, I remember I had requested that part of it, and I think you all agreed, was that the people getting the new TIP training, you were sending them back, were going to report on it or evaluate what they learned about the relationship between mental illness and alcohol? And I don't remember ever getting any, any commentary. I also had a question, but I would like to answer your question before we talk about this. But my question is how lit, how lit it is in there? Is it dark? How easy is it to see if someone is intoxicated? Is it a dark...
I mean, that's also, if their restaurant's so dark that they can't tell that somebody's intoxicated.
Well, that's my question.
With their control.
Because that's, I'm just thinking about some things that, some ways of punishing, I don't know what the word is, that we do.
Have anything like this?
Instead of revoking, I was thinking of a longer time without, but I would like to get through this. And so I was thinking about things such as requiring food, and I don't know if that's a law that has to be passed, but you know, if you had to give a certain amount of food, sell a certain amount of food at the same time as you sold drinks to someone who's not eating. And if you had to have a certain amount of light, so that you could actually see if somebody was intoxicated.
See, it's difficult because we've never seen any recordings at all, so we have no idea whether it's too dark or too light, or if it exists for that matter.
But before we talk about the, any punishments, I think we should vote on the, whether or not it's a violation.
Yes, we have to vote that there's an issue to, to issue some kind of...
I second your, Peter.
It's already been second, we're just having discussion. As I said, the concern I have is that you have no recognition that people are impaired. That is, I don't know what the solution is for that, Raymond, I just, you know, we, you're one restaurant that serves in town. I don't have the same situation at other restaurants. Now, maybe it's because at those restaurants, people come in and they eat while they drink, whereas you'll just let somebody come in and sit at the bar and drink. I don't know, but it obviously is impacting you.
To me, to me...
You have to turn that on, I'm sorry.
To me, is, it doesn't matter they eat or drink, or they only eat. Intoxicated is the key. Even they eat, they drink, they still can be intoxicated.
Oh, yeah.
All right? So the key is, you have to look at the effort I put in. This time, this incident is like, just like I said, I never think, when I make the call, I really need help from the police station. I never think about that, I will be here tonight, because I thought, even Officer Collins said, "Okay, we take care of that, you did a good job." I feel so proud when he says something to me. And then all of a sudden, I mean, I have to be here and getting punished for doing something I think I do right. I know, I, just like I keep saying that, I, when people drink, they have two or three drinks, they come into the restaurant, there's like, at least a dozen bars in, on Greg Row, at least. They come in, they pop in there, they come to my restaurant, I don't know, I really don't know. I mean, I don't know if they've been drinking or not, really.
Okay, but...
Until, until I find out they add different. That's what I did, exactly what the TIPS spokesman told me to do that. I provide transportation, I shop him off, finally, I have no choice, I call the police. I'm the one to make the police call. I mean, what else you...
But I would say, I would say that that was also when he was annoying your clients. He was annoying other people in your bar.
That's the time, that's the moment, that's the moment.
So therefore, he was, he was injuring your business at that time, and you wanted the police to come in and help you out. And what I'm saying is, you may have set yourself up by serving him too much to begin with.
If I know I serve him too much, I wouldn't serve it, because once I...
Goes back to my original argument.
No, that's why it is.
Nina, I have a question, sorry. I, we, we've been dealing with this issue, and we've had a number of hearings about the same restaurant, and they've been pretty close in time. And that we found, this is going to be, or if we vote to find that there was an over-serving violation, it will be the third one. Is there some, I don't know, is there some standard that exists either at the state level or locally that you know of, that sort of, sort of like three strikes and you're out kind of thing? Or is it entirely in our discretion to decide? Because, you know, just revocation is, the license becomes available for somebody else, and because the people at the state level had the wisdom to not let the local government decide how many licenses they want to issue, we don't have an unlimited number, so in all, in all likelihood, that would be the end of his alcohol, his serving license, because it would probably get snapped up by somebody. So I just want to, I just would like some comfort about, you know, going to, you know, revocation.
I, well, so I have two responses to that. The first is, there is no hard and fast rule when it comes to the granting or revocation or suspension of these licenses. It is completely at the discretion of the licensing authority with, and this is my second point, oversight by the ABCC there. If the license is revoked, there is an appeals process, and that involves an adjudicatory hearing with the ABCC. They do have a body of case law where one could try to discern a standard, at which point revocations are well-founded or likely to be upheld. But that case law and that body of decisional law is not easily accessible and searchable to kind of discern that standard. So it is very much a case-by-case and circumstance-by-circumstance body of law that you're left with when you, an appeal is made to the ABCC. But that is a safety valve for a restaurant that would like to appeal any action, whether it's a suspension or a revocation. They do have that secondary level of review. So the ABCC, if the restaurant, the license holder would like to take that route, they would have the last word.
And would presumably you, as counsel, would have to represent the town, or is that just a...
Typically.
Yeah, at the, at the appeal level, okay. And do you have any sense of how often appeals are successful, or...
I've been up there a couple of times and seen a couple of other hearings. The body that comprises the commission changes, and with that, you know, the structure and decisions tend to change, but typically, they're used to working with license holders to remedy violations, and they see a whole range of offenses, ranging from, you know, not very serious things to incredibly egregious, you know, fatal and deadly accidents. So they have a much broader scope of the circumstances surrounding license holders in the state certainly than, than the board does here in Actin. But they, the standard under the statute certainly defers to the local licensing authority because you are the ones who know your town and know your residents and knows, you know, what's needed to protect them.
I'd feel a lot more comfortable sitting here if I had experience with ABCC, you know, the standard and all that, and what the things that they have to deal with, but you know, I feel as if, well, as Franny says, sometimes I feel as if I'm playing God, and I'm very ill-equipped to play God, so anyhow.
If a license gets revoked and he appeals, is the revocation stayed during the appeal?
Yes.
So, again, right now, we're just discussing the motion about whether or not this is an over-service violation, before we discuss any potential penalties.
Correct, because we haven't established that there is a penalty. We have a motion in a second.
If...
All those in favor of the motion, which was, do you...
That, under the Massachusetts general laws, that this is an over-service violation.
Okay, so is there a...
It was Peter seconded.
Peter seconded, okay. So we've got Janet made the motion, Peter second.
No, no, Katie's...
Katie made the motion.
What did I say?
I'm the other opponent.
Brain is fried. Got to start drinking more. The, all right, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. Question for you, Chief, is if this is an over-service, and generally, there's progressive penalties for over-service, does Chief Widmire have any sense of what his recommendation would be?
Yes, I spoke with the chief, and his recommendation would be one week suspension.
One week suspension.
I'd like to say that I second Mike, and that I think we should revoke this license. I know that's an extreme, extreme step, but this is the third time that we've determined that there was a violation or an over-service in eight months. And I don't, just from the discussion that was here tonight, and from what Mr. Chang has said, I don't think that the steps and the conditions that we have put on them in the past have done anything to make them better at serving or, you know, being holders of this license. It seems to me that this is a worse violation than some of the earlier ones. So it's just becoming a worse problem. And like Mike, I'm concerned that, you know, this guy, if he hadn't been bothering somebody, would have kept drinking and would have left and hit somebody with his BMW. That's not okay. And I don't want to be sitting here when somebody's killed or gravely injured because they were, you know, we suspended them for a week, but after that, they, they let somebody keep drinking and they let them go. So I'll be joining Mike in voting to revoke.
Well, as you might have guessed, I'm probably inclined toward a more, less draconian measure, and if the chief recommends a one-week suspension, the chief has more experience with this sort of thing than I have, and more perspective. The one advantage of revocation is that if Mr. Chang were to appeal, he would end up dealing with the ABCC. From what counsel has said, it sounds as if they, they try to help the business, and perhaps they show up at the restaurant, and maybe they could be on-site and say, have somebody shadowing and saying, "Oop, you know, that's something you're supposed to be paying attention to." I don't know. But, but I just, knowing that we, this, that this license is basically going bye-bye if we revoke it, I mean, it's not going to come back to him, I just, I do feel as if I want to give him one more chance. But, and especially because the chief was, is not recommending revocation. And the chief has been at this line of work for a lot longer than I have.
Yes, Franny.
I'm inclined to do a stricter punishment than the chief says, but slightly less than revoking it. I want to turn on the lights. I want to take away the license for a month. I want to require the lights be on for three months, so that you can really look at what people look like when they're drinking. And that you require them to eat food. I don't, I don't drink, as you know, and so I don't know what the right amount of food to require is, and I don't even know if we can legally say that. But I would want to require that.
You know, as reluctant as I am to, to take away somebody's livelihood, basically, I agree with Mike and Katie. It seems to me this, this restaurant has a reputation for attracting customers who drink to extreme excess. I mean, the two, I've only been here for two hearings on this, but the level of intoxication that's involved in these cases is very disturbing. And, you know, I, I understand Mr. Chang's predicament. He feels like he did the right thing here. On the other, on the other hand, I agree with Mike. We don't see this with other bars in town, at least the ones that are still open. These were not, you know, we don't see this with all the other bars on Route 2A. You may argue that they go to bar hopping up and down Route 2A, but we don't see this with others. So whatever you're doing is not adequate compared to what other businesses are doing in town. And I'm inclined to revoke the license and let Mr. Chang deal with the ABCC.
Mr. Chairman, if we may.
Unless you turn on the microphone.
Just to clarify one point, unlike most state statutes, on a quick check here, the revocation is not stayed pending appeal. It has the same force and effect as if the appeal has not been taken. So before anyone makes a decision, I just wanted to correct that.
Okay, do you know how long the delay is in getting a hearing on these things?
The decision, no, the, I don't know, I haven't been up there for a couple of years at this point, so I don't know what kind of backlog it is, but the decision has to be rendered within 30 days of completion of the hearing. So they do have some timeframe set up, so that, you know, this is not hopefully stretched out for, for six months or so, but I did want, want you to have that information.
So you need the 30 days after our hearing, or after their hearing?
After the ABCC's hearing. So between the time of the effect of your order tonight, or whenever notice of your order is officially served, and 30 days after the ABCC's hearing, if you vote to revoke, there will be no liquor license for the restaurant during that period. I certainly would recommend that the board not take any action to do anything with that potentially open liquor license in the meantime, but as far as the impact... But as far as the impact on the business, they're, they can operate, but certainly without that liquor license during that period.
Just one other comment about to follow up on Franny's comment. I thought I had heard that we had put a restriction on the restaurant in the past to prohibit allowing people to drink who were taking out orders. This appears to be a situation where people don't, and I disagree with Mr. Chang on that too. I I think people who are sitting down and having a full meal and having drinks are different in different circumstances than people who are just in the bar to just drink scorpion balls. Particularly 24-year-olds.
I, I wish I had found out, like, how many bars are there in our area? I mean, this is someone who came from Littleton to drink on a state highway. So we're not just protecting, when we're thinking about protecting people, we're not just talking about acts and citizens. We're talking about people along a state highway, we're talking about a bigger thing. And my question is, if we revoke this license, people want, people will move around to whatever bar is the the easiest to drink at.
But that's the point is, so therefore, if you raise the bar as to what's acceptable, then you minimize that. People are going to have to drink on their own.
Or they're going to have to go to a bar that hasn't had any violations because they know when to cut people off and not let them leave. I mean, that's Peter's point. None of the other bars in the area have this issue. When Not Your Average Joes came in, they were very proactive and, you know, took a lot of steps and they haven't had any issues since. That hasn't happened in this case.
And and this isn't just a bar. I I'd like to hear about your Chinese food. It's a Chinese restaurant, right? So I never hear a mention of the food. It, it, we're not, if if we vote to revoke, we're not revoking your ability to have a Chinese restaurant.
No, common vouch, his license is not affected. That would be a border health issue, not an over-serving issue.
Right, so we're not taking his, your ability away to, if...
But, but, restaurant makes most of their money on alcohol.
I realize that, I realize that, but that would be a necessity to stay in business. You'd have to up the level of the food, I suppose. I haven't eaten there, so I'm not commenting on the food. But if people are going there to drink and this board votes to revoke the license, we're not saying they can't continue in business.
No, not as a restaurant, no. But but as a restaurant where they serve alcohol, it would be yes.
So I'll make a motion to revoke the liquor license. I don't know if it needs to be more specific.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion relative to this? I know how frustrating this can be for you because you feel like you did the right thing. What I'm saying is, you're missing the point. That's, it's not the right thing to over-serve and then call the police to solve the problem. The idea is, don't do the, don't make the mistake in the first place. It's just, it's uncommon with all of the liquor licenses that we have issued in town. You are the one.
You just kind of speak to me for you to do something, but to back up on the action. I mean, what else, okay, if you are in a, in a position, in my position, you find out someone, that's why they, that's why they have a term called intoxicated. You never know anybody intoxicated. So are you saying that if someone intoxicated at a bar is already illegal?
No, 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 they are, if you serve them.
No, no, I stopped serving them. I find out they are intoxicated, I stopped serving them.
But we're not, we're not talking about whether or not, we've already voted that this was an over-service. At this point, we're talking about what the punishment should be. And I, you know, I, again, I, you know, appreciate that you called the cops in this situation, but this has been an escalating situation and at least three of us feel that you're not responsibly holding this license.
But do you think, do you think I did everything, everything I did was right? Everything I did, I, that's what the TIPS program said. I did everything that I can do to po, to, 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 to avoid any damage.
If if we vote this, you have the option of appealing to the A B C C. And I would say that, I mean, I can poll the board in terms of what they feel, but I would not offer the license up for someone else until the appeal process was completed. Would that be...
Yeah, and counsel recommended that, so I don't think we should go against counsel's...
Oh, no, 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 but I'm saying, so, I mean, that's, that's the best I can do. I'm just, it upsets me that you don't see what the, what the problem is here. If you allow it to get too far...
I didn't, I did not allow it to get far. Selectmen, I did not allow it to get far.
Okay.
What else I can do?
Serving, serving somebody three drinks and no food is a good indicator that you've let it get too far.
So are you saying that, are you saying that any other restaurant in, in Acton, they don't serve more than three drinks?
No, and, but this is, we do...
You're talking about double standard.
And and you're at 100% and they're at 0% at this point, which means that I'm, I'm solving the problem.
Mike, we should just vote on this.
I'm not going to argue with that.
Yes, Franny?
When you, when you're talking about double standard, that is, is not right in this time. If someone, if someone like Crosswalk Cafe, they do the same thing, they call, they call the police, it happens, same thing happened to me. You think Mr. Jay Manning will be here?
He's been before us, yes.
But I, what I'm saying, something, he called the police.
Okay, we got to...
Yeah, we've got to...
Anyway...
You, you have an option available to you.
I'm not going to argue with that, but the thing is...
We need to take...
I strongly agree that I did something right. I, I did my best. I shut people off. That's what the TIPS program say too, exactly. I shut people up, I grabbed the drink away, I arranged transportation for him, I called the police. Even the police came here, he said I did a good job. So it's different, people have different version. Some people say I did it right, some people say I did a good job. And now I get punished for revoking license. I, I didn't look for that. I called the police to get help, not, not for something like as this, as a return.
That's the truth.
Revoking, revoking my license is...
We've got to vote on, we've got to vote on the, on the...
I understand, I understand, but that's, I'm sorry, that's, that's how I feel, that's how I feel.
I understand that, but you have some, you have a remedy available to you. You can appeal this to the A B C C. I recommend that you do that, you make your case to them.
Selectmen, I understand that. Everything, select, everything, even this, it costs a lot of money.
I understand that.
My daughter, my daughter is a law school student in N Y U, all right? She said that if your business is being what, being like in, under the radar, if your business is under the radar, and if I can't afford a lawyer, move the business elsewhere. And I think she is right, I think she is right, because I'm, I'm, I'm only a, a, a businessman, I'm dealing the Chinese food, I sell Chinese food, and I doing everything is like all legally. But right now, I am so afraid, I, I'm, I'm not going to say I can't believe, but I'm so scared of the police, which is sad, which is a shame.
Mm-hmm.
I called the police, I don't look for trouble like that.
Thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna call a vote on this. All right? We have a motion on the, on the floor for revoke, revocation of the license by Franny, by...
Katie.
Katie, God, I just looked at Franny, that's why. Seconded by Peter. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
All right, we have a three to two vote. Did you get the, all right, thank you. Appeal, that's your, that's your strategy.
But it cost me a lot of fortune to do that, which is, I can't afford that.
I'm sorry.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right. I'm not sure, do we have, we do the legal notice for the, the streets? Do I have to read this whole thing? Who wrote this up? What did you? Oh, that one.
You have to say as follows.
All right. The Board, the Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Monday, January 12th, 2015, at 8:40 now, in the Room 204 of the Acton Town Hall, 472 Main Street, Acton, on the proposed amendments to the existing traffic rules and orders as follows. Add, following to general parking prohibitions, prohibitions within parking spaces designated for reserves for vehicles owned or operated by disabled or handicapped persons unless in compliance with Chapter L and the general bylaws of the town of Acton, add the following parking restrictions. No person shall park a vehicle for longer than two hours at any time between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. on any day except Sundays and public holidays in the following described streets or parts thereof. Mass Ave, South Side, from point 260 feet east of Kinsley Road, easterly a distance of 240 feet. No person shall park a vehicle for longer than four hours at any time between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. on any day except Sundays and public holidays in the following described streets or parts thereof. School Street, Southly Side, starting at point about 120 feet east of Main Street to River Street. Add to the following parking prohibition, Mass Ave, South Side, from the intersection from Kinsley Road, easterly for a distance of about 260 feet. School Street, Northly Side, starting at a point about 200 feet east of Main Street to a point opposite River Street. School Street, Southly Side, from Main Street, easterly for a distance of 120 feet. Taylor Road, both sides from the intersection with Main Street to the intersection with Coughlin Street. Agawam Road, both sides from the intersection with Elm Street for a distance of approximately 140 feet. Elm Street, North Side, Southly from the intersection with Agawam Road, a distance of approximately 250 feet. Replace a section related to the operation of motor vehicles with the following. The driver of a vehicle excluding bicycles outside of business districts shall not drive in any sidewalks except at a permanent or temporary driveway. Add the following prohibited and mandatory turning maneuvers. Left lane must turn left at Hayward Road, eastbound at Main Street. School Street, westbound at Main Street. Main Street, southbound at School Street. Main Street, southbound at High Street. Right lane must turn right at Hayward Road, eastbound at Main Street. Add the following stop signs. Lincoln Drive at Jackson Drive. Lincoln Drive at Newtown Road. And Jefferson Drive at Hayward Road. Add the following new section related to yield signs. For yield signs in accordance with the provision of Chapter 89, Section 9 of the general laws, the following streets are designated as streets at the intersection in the direction indicated. In accordance with the foregoing, the streets listed below are hereby declared to contribute, constitute yield streets. Strawberry Hill Road at Strawberry Hill Road. Hammond Street at Newtown Road. And Concord Road at Concord Road. Remove the following special regulations that prohibit operating a motor vehicle upon the following streets during particular period. Charter Road to Mass Ave to Hayward Road from 7:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. I'll get you for this.
Just say as listed here.
All right. Now, now, if anyone has any questions, though. All right, Corey, how are you doing?
Good. You pretty well summed that up. That's, yeah, essentially, since September, when we went through that round and we kind of cleaned everything up, we've gotten several different, either requests for new amendments or clarifications to things that are in there. And just going down that list, the first thing that we had that came up was the Transportation Advisory Committee had asked about making a connection in the traffic rules and orders to the accessible spaces and the rules that apply in the general bylaws. So we have a, an amendment that just sort of has a, in the general prohibitions for parking, it makes a link to, to the general bylaws, so it, it does have a connection in there. We get into sort of the parking prohibitions and parking restrictions. The first one that I kind of went through was on School Street. During that meeting in September, it was, it was brought up a question on the parking sort of between Main Street and River Street. There was an issue with available parking out there with the commuters and making room for the entities that are out there. We took a closer look at it. There were some signs out there that were, that are up sort of between the municipal parking lot, down to about the church, that restricts parking during the weekdays except for weekends. Those aren't in the regulations, it was, they're just, they're enforceable signs that are up there. But it left, sort of leaves a no man's land between, in front of the church down the river. And apparently, that's where the commuters were parking throughout the day. So it was taking up sort of any available spots for the church to be able to use. So I took a closer look down that stretch and what we, and in speaking with the church, what we came up with was, it looked like a, a four-hour parking restriction there would kind of work well with the church and any potential future programs. We'd be proposing a, a no parking restriction at Main Street, down sort of just past the Civil Defense Building, to kind of protect that area's cars are turning in and out. And it would, it leaves the four-hour parking from that area down just short of River Street. Looking at there, we wanted to make sure we had a, sort of no parking at the intersection rounding that provided a sufficient sight distance. In amongst there, there's places that you can't park in front of driveways, hydrants, sort of by the municipal parking, municipal parking lot. But it, it sets sort of, the, the intent here is to set that side up, so the, those areas that you can park, that it is allowed and you can park there for four hours. In addition, there's, it'd be, is an amendment to include a no parking on the other side of School Street, sort of opposite where River Street is, running up to with a two-hour parking. It's, it's already posted no parking. It would just put that into the book so it's legal. And that's kind of the proposal that's before the board for School Street. There would be a requirement to restripe with the center liners. It, it keeps a pretty wide lane as you're heading towards Main Street. This would, when we go to restripe School Street in the spring, we would restripe it more like 11-foot lanes, so it, it, it formalizes it, so it keeps it a little bit easier for the cars to, on both sides, to have enough room and to provide parking on the, on the church side. The, the next location that we were looking at is Mass Ave up in West Acton, where the Way Project just built the new spaces in front of Gardner Field. There's an existing area from Kinsley down to the new spaces, the, the curbs are painted yellow, and it's, it's enforced, there's no parking right now, but there is no restriction. So we'd be looking to make an amendment to make that sort of a legal no parking area. And then the new spaces that they just constructed, this would be making it a two-hour parking restriction. When they did the other side, we had talked to the Recreation Director and with the Way Project of the businesses. Two hours seems sufficient for sort of both uses. And in approving this, it, it kind of keeps two-hour parking from the railroad tracks towards Kelly's Corner and one-hour parking up towards Central Street. So it kind of keeps all that in line and it would help to keep the traffic, the parking flowing for the businesses that are out there. The next one that we have is a, a parking prohibition on Taylor Road. This would be from Main Street down to Coughlin Street. Right now, there's an existing no parking restriction is from Coughlin down to Route 2. This upper section came into conversation when Tom was working on the algorithm. It was discussed, we're making this a prohibiting parking where the road is somewhat more narrow. So this is just following up with that and making no parking on both sides. This next one just came up not too long ago. I had some calls about parking on Agawam Road, sort of during the pickup-drop-off times. People are turning off of Elm Street and parking along the side right there, there's a, it's already posted no parking at the intersection rounding, but right after that, in front of the first house, people are parking there. In speaking with the homeowner at the corner, I know she had some concerns. She's seen kids walk into school and cars parked there and cars coming around, so she was in favor of it. And so we're essentially looking to extend the no parking sort of up beyond the first house, so it would keep parking away from the corner. And we're also looking at adding a no parking on the other side of her property along Agawam, just so we don't shift the problem onto Agawam Road right there and continue to cause an obstruction with sight distance. We're working with her as well as far as moving some of the bushes that she has and relocating some of our signs so we can help improve sight lines. So we just want to make sure we kind of maintain that. And I think, then as we get into the next section, we're looking at operation of vehicles and mandatory turning maneuver lanes. This was an area the Transportation Advisory Committee had commented, I think, on, they noticed the self-act and traffic signal, the lanes there that a left turn only, right turn only on School Street, that they weren't in the rules. So we have, and looking at, I think, Powder Mill and High, those mandatory lanes were in there, but the, sort of the mandatory turning lanes in around South Acton, the traffic signal at Main and High Street and at Main and Hayward and Main, those turning lanes weren't in the traffic rules, so we're looking to just put those in so that we have those enforceable. In the next section, when we were looking at those, we don't actually have a, the section in there for yield signs. We've never had a section for yield signs, but from what I can see... We've never had a section for yield signs, but from what I can see, we do have two existing ones, one out here, Concord, and the other side of the monument where Concord kind of intersects itself and then down on Newtown and Hammond. So we're looking at just adding that section in and then putting those two that are already out there, getting those in. And then we do have one new one down at the, it's at the intersection of Pope and Strawberry Hill, but it's where Strawberry Hill kind of intersects itself at the island. The police had a situation there, so we just wanted to clarify and have that yield sign added at that location. And then as far as stop signs, we have three new locations on either side of Lincoln Drive. At Lincoln, at Jackson, there was some concerns came up. Then we had been talking to the neighbors about landscaping and kind of cutting some of the overgrown brush back, but adding a stop sign there. While we were looking at that one, it came up in regards to the other end at Newtown Road, sort of another main entrance out of the neighborhood and at Jefferson coming out onto Hayward. So we have sort of those three locations for new signs going out. One thing that came up last September when we were looking at the new traffic rules and orders was the restriction of bicycles on sidewalks. So when I took a closer look, what happened in the new policy, the definition of a vehicle now includes a bicycle. In our old, in the old traffic rules and orders going back, that wasn't part of the definition. So by virtue of the definition and the prohibitions of vehicles, it, the last approval of the traffic rules and orders restricted bicycles on sidewalks. So what we're doing here is we have an amendment to sort of put it back in compliance with the master no law, but also put it back to how it was being handled before, that we allowed bicycles on sidewalks. The master no law has a restriction that it's outside of business districts, that's just how the law's written. So we have the amendment to reflect the law, but also allow them sidewalks where they can be on sidewalks. And then the last piece that came up, I think traffic that Transportation Advisory Committee had raised was there's a restriction, special restriction on Charter Road that limits when cars can be on that area. That section, that rule was put in place back in the 60s when it was a public way. Since the 70s, it was discontinued. It's sort of under the jurisdiction of the schools, so there's sort of no signs or anything that they're restricting now. It just makes more sense that we remove this and sort of how they're handling traffic.
Just codify it, yeah.
Yeah, so we're just kind of codifying that, then that through. And that's sort of all the amendments that we have tonight.
See, it took me longer to read it than it took you to explain it. Yes, Katie?
Cory, I just had a question about the one on Mass Ave. You said you spoke with the Recreation Department about the time limit on there. Did you also ever speak with the developers of the Wave Project about how long they felt?
Yes, I think it was in 2012 or 2010. When they first did the other side, it came up because the establishments were there. The parking was never available for their businesses because there was always other cars all day long. So they were the ones that actually approached us to get the ball rolling. So we had spoke to them whether or not one hour or two hour made sense. The fact of restaurants and stuff that were there, the two hours made more sense for them. So I just want to make sure when I talk to the Recreation Director that two hours was enough time for the kids at the playground, that they felt that was good, so.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure. I guess two hours for a restaurant's probably pretty good.
Yeah, and they were comfortable when I spoke with Matthias Rosenfeld on that, so, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Peter?
Well, certainly appreciate you being so responsive to the South Acton Congregational Church and the members are well represented here. So this starts up right after, 120 feet is be right after the Public Safety Building, I assume, pretty much, huh?
Yeah, just past, there's a short section, I think there's some mailboxes and then it would start there. What it does is it gives, in the event that they're pulling out of that garage, you can see down to see cars coming as they're pulling out.
Okay.
And then you can, allows parking sort of in between the different driveways and areas.
Right, there's a few spaces and then there's a bunch of private spaces that are, that are, like pull-in spaces, yeah, before the town lot there and then, okay. So that'd be four hours to those few spaces after the Civil Defense Building and before the private parking there.
Yeah, yeah, and there'd be, like I say, certain places that you can't, off-street or hydrants, things like that.
Right, and then on the north side, there's a cutout just before Exchange Hall or if you're going toward Main Street, that'd still be parking, obviously.
Yeah, that has two-hour parking that would stay.
Okay.
And then the other, the remainders, you're heading down School towards River. It's posted as no parking, it's just not in the rules, so.
Right.
That's in here just to make those on the books, so.
Okay, just a couple of other, I think that's great. I mean, certainly the church appreciates that. But a couple of other questions, not about this particularly, but I think Bill Clower also asked about making River Street one-way down to, is it Chatham? What's the name that cuts across there? I don't know, are there warrants for making streets one-way, that the street has to meet or something like that?
Yeah, there's, under the master no law, Chapter 85, the town has the ability to do it. I think the state gets involved if you were creating like a mid-block one-way, there's certain restrictions you have to kind of pay attention to, but you can do that. I'm in the process right now of a survey of River Street for a sidewalk. I'll be doing, Chadwick, so hopefully I'll get that later this winter and then we'll start looking at different options, things like that, that hopefully we can fit sidewalks, parking, whatever we can do to.
Yeah, I mean, because I thought if it was made one-way, there might be the ability to park on one side of it. I don't know if it's wired for at least one side.
And some of the neighbors had some concerns about speeding and that, so we'd be looking at what we can do to help all those things.
And also, I just drove down River Street today, there is a fairly elaborate treehouse that somebody, it looks like somebody put it up recently. I'm not even sure it's, I don't want to spoil some kids, it's fun, but I'm not even sure it's for kids. It looks like somebody would sit out there and have a drink and look over the river.
Is there a building permit? That's my question.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's, the guardrail stops, it looks like a parking space, so I assume it's a private parking space that somebody built this treehouse in. But it looks, I don't know if you know about any permits, if you know it's there, it looks like it's in the wetland setback to me. It's right on the bank of the river, so, you know anything about that?
I've seen it.
Okay.
It's on private property. Yeah, I don't know much about it other than I have seen it.
And if it's a treehouse, it's not on the wetlands, it's in the tree.
It's got a roof on it, so it should be, somebody, I would say that needs a permit and the conscom ought to look at it, but, okay. And then finally, we talked about the citizen who was here who has vision, you know, problems and the whistles for the stop light at Main Street and School Street.
Yes, yeah, I've been looking into it with a consultant. We're developing a sort of an assessment of our signals and how to implement those. Right now, we're working through the issues because once you, once you start the certain criteria, you'll see the new pedestrian signals with the countdowns. Once you do one thing, it triggers you to do another thing. So I'm trying to get a handle on, once I, because once I go to put the new style audio buttons on it, it sounds like it's going to trigger me to have to redo the way the pedestrian ramps are, which would trigger me to put additional buttons, which would trigger me to do the pedestrian signals. So I'm trying to get a handle on exactly what's triggering what and how much I have to do and get a handle on the cost, so I'm hoping to get that through this winter, so.
Okay. All right, good job. Thanks you, thank you.
Yes, Janet?
I never noticed that there was a yield sign on Concord at Concord in front of the fire. Well, if there is one, I've missed it. I mean, I apparently don't, yeah, well, I don't yield, obviously, because I didn't see it, but I don't, I don't think, is it going, if you're, yeah, if you're going straight from Main Street down that section right in front of the fire station, because I very rarely go that way, or is it the other way?
Yeah, it's causing the approach, if you're coming 27 south and you turn onto Concord, it's stopping this one before you get on, sort of like a left continuing.
Yeah, I never go that way. I've gone, I've come out that way occasionally, but I hate being there because usually I have to cut across or I have to turn left and it's a headache, so I tend to, if I go anywhere, go right anyhow. I have a question about this proposed yield sign on Strawberry Hill. Well, it's on Strawberry Hill Road, but the photograph shows it kind of on the branch off from Pope Road. I don't, I don't know which way is it facing. Is it going to be facing somebody coming off of Pope and bearing right onto Strawberry Hill Road at?
If you were coming up Pope Road and from Concord and you turned right on that leg to head towards Great Road in Acton, it'd be yielding that approach before you turned on to sort of the stretch. So if you were coming up Pope Road, heading, coming from sort of Spencer Hill Road.
Coming from Concord on Pope Road. If you're coming from Concord on Pope Road, are you, when you say up.
We're on Strawberry Hill or we're on Concord Road?
Yeah, are you talking, oh, you're coming?
I'm down Strawberry Hill right now.
Okay, okay, okay. Let's say where Spurgs used to be, that end of Strawberry Hill Road, you come up and you head toward the intersection with Pope, where is this?
You would have, if you were coming from Spurgs, coming towards Pope Road, you would have the right-of-way going right up to Pope Road to stop.
Yeah.
It'd be that leg, if you, before you get to the intersection, that leg on the left that would send you towards Spring Hill.
So if somebody's coming?
So someone's coming up Pope Road from Spring Hill.
Oh, if somebody, somebody wants to bear left and get onto Pope Road going north or up, that, okay, so that's where it's okay.
Causing them to yield to look before they.
She uses this intersection every day, all day, that's why.
Well, yeah, and I'm just trying to, I think that there are occasionally some issues there, you know, where I'm driving across and I have the right-of-way and I hesitate because I see somebody coming, fixing to just basically turn left in front of me and I sort of slow down.
Yeah, we've looked at Pope and Strawberry Hill for a multi-way stop. It just doesn't meet the warrants for that accidental volume, but we looked at other improvements that we could do to improve what's there right now. Some of them, we had a, I don't say we had non-compliance, we just didn't have, we put better signs up to try to warn you, advanced stop signs. This yield sign would help kind of correct this point. And then there was quite a few accidents that shot curve further out. It seemed to be where there was a few more happening there than we were finding at the intersection, but.
That's interesting.
Yeah, so.
It's a, yeah, it's not a heavily populated place. But that island is a very popular place for illegal signage.
Yeah.
And fortunately, there's a neighbor who cannot stand, apparently goes out and takes him down, the yard sale signs, the, I think he leaves the bike, the bike race signs up, but you know, usually if my, when my son, my husband is preparing to go drive down and take the sign out, somebody has beaten him to it, so.
Every time I go up there, someone's always out cleaning the area.
That's the zoning enforcement officer. It's not Cory's problem. Chomp, chomp.
Thank you.
Yes, Franny?
First of all, you mentioned that stuff at the light for, that the man who's visually impaired suggested. I'm glad you'll be done with it by the end of winter because I'm sure it's hard for him to walk by then, but it would be really nice to get it done soon thereafter. And my guess is that all these things that are, you have to do, are good things.
Yes, yeah, it's just giving a handle on it.
So I'm hoping it gets done. I also am wondering about those other businesses in, oh, I have two other things I wanted to mention. First of all, I think there are people here, I remember, I was talking to somebody who belongs to that, the church in South Acton, so I want to make sure that they have a chance to say whatever they want to say. But about West Acton, it feels unfair to the businesses such as Perry Winkle Glassworks where people take classes and might want to be there for longer, or the food establishments there. I feel funny about giving the Wave businesses two hours and one hour elsewhere, and it makes me sort of wonder, are there people that want to stay for one hour but not two hours? What I mean is, would it hurt to just make it two-hour parking throughout the village to make it fair?
When we first did, and I'm not really sure, I think it was in 2010, there was a question with available spaces and there was a consideration of putting parking on Kinsley Road. At that point, we sent out notices to all the businesses in the area and the residences on Kinsley Road. And I didn't get a lot of feedback back, but from what I, the feedback that we got, because we were looking at all those options of making it all two-hour for consistency for the police, I did get some feedback in between the railroad tracks at Central. And the feedback that I got, they liked the one hour, they liked for the stores that were there, they liked the quick turnover. There is off-street parking available in behind the Red White Brew and over by the Christian Science Church, if they wanted to stay longer and they wanted to park on that side. We actually had one-hour parking in front of Moods that actually got changed to two hours because the two hours, the one hour just didn't work for an appointment, so we, and it, for consistency, it made it nice because the railroad tracks became the split between one hour, two hour. So it is something that we've looked into and it seemed like that was the general consensus, what I was getting from the businesses.
So I would love to just let the businesses know, they obviously know, but, so that they know they can come back to us if this is a problem, so.
Thank you. I just have two quick ones. One is the Elm Street, Agawam Road, moving that back. The person on the corner there that was requesting this, they realized that they can't park there either, right?
Yes, yeah.
Well, because we've had people come before us and say, I just don't want other people parking there, but if I'm having a party, I want my people to park there. And it doesn't work that way, so that's one thing. Two is relative to the thing that Peter brought up about the one-way on River Street. I believe that we've still got a construction business, the Lazaro is still on River Street. And I don't know if the people on Chadwick, is it Chadwick?
Yeah.
That if they realized that right now trucks that go into River Street come out River Street would now have to go down and out Chadwick, so they're going to get more heavy truck traffic, paving kind of trucks, you know, dump trucks and stuff, pass their homes, so it's definitely going to require more than just our decision. And finally, the 11-foot width by increase in the parking at the church. Usually we're 12-foot lanes, if I'm not mistaken.
It depends on the street. There are, like in front of West Acton, the Wave Project, those are two 12-foot lanes. Carlisle Road, I think those are 11-foot lanes. When you look at the different complete street policies in different communities, I know in Boston, they do look at, they are looking at 10-to-12-foot lanes for traffic. They stress the, sort of more in the 11-foot lane to do that. It's a doable thing. It's, I mean, it's.
I know, in fact, Windsor Ave is another one that right now has a kind of a restriction down near 111 where there's parking on one side, not on the other, but that's, you kind of have to wait if somebody's coming the other way. It's not always you can get it.
In the case of School Street, it's the same footprint, people are parking there now, it's just putting the line that gives sort of a, one lane a little more opportunity in.
Yep, okay. All right, well, that's the only questions that I have. Well, yes, Franny, I can see.
I just wanted to appreciate the Transportation Advisory Committee and Ben Mutin, who's the chair, for really looking at it and pointing out things such as the bicycle and sidewalk.
Okay, and then to Franny's point, do we have any input from the public? Would anyone in the public like to speak to this? Any that expectantly?
I've been waiting. Hello, everyone, Renee Solok, 26 Taylor Road. I just have a couple clarification questions for Taylor Road. From what the notice said and then from what you were saying about the no parking signs just being extended, the notice made it sound like the no parking signs would have restrictions so that on Sundays people could park there. Which ways that no parking sign going to be? We want it to be no parking the way that it is the rest on Taylor Road.
The, yeah, the way the legal script is written is the, where you see the four-hour except on weekends and holidays, those are for School Street and Mass Ave. Taylor Road's just a straight no parking.
Straight no parking, okay, good. And then just a second quick question regarding placement of signage. It's a residential area, so we were hoping that when those signs get placed, that the neighbors could have input into that. I don't know what the process is, but whether you put a stake there before or you could let us know, what's the process on that?
Yeah, typically we, I'll put, would stakes out, we try to pick places in between homes, we're not right in front of someone's picture window, but we'll set stakes first and kind of eyeball where they are. We try to make sure that the safety officer's comfortable with this placement as well, so it's, he feels that someone pulling up realizes that it's continuous, so.
Okay, and do you have any idea how many signs would go up on the street?
At this point, no, no. We'll kind of gauge it by sort of where they go and how to do that, so.
Okay, and then last question. I know earlier we had talked about other traffic calming measures for Taylor Road. I don't know if any of those had been thought about at all to this point?
At this point, no. There is a. There is a, we've been working with the sidewalk committee and the schools, they were looking at a Safe Roots to School grant. That was something they were going to check with the schools to see the status of that because that would, if we can get that grant, that would give us the ability to have some groups come up from the state, sort of do an overall assessment, start gauging how that would work and get some ideas on how to move forward with that. So, we don't have anything at this point, but we're working towards that.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Martha Rounds. I live on 13 Half Moon Hill. Speaking for the South Acton Congregational Church, I just want to say thank you very much. We really appreciate the efforts that the town has gone to, to make these new provisions. And this four-hour parking has the potential to make a big difference for us as a community. So I just want to say thank you very much.
Any more comments, public comments? All right, I'd entertain a motion to approve the amendments to the existing traffic rules and orders.
So moved.
All right, we have a most.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Janet and a second from Franny. And yes, I want to do them all at once.
Yeah, I just didn't know if we.
And quickly if we can. All right, any more discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, Cory. We'll get this thing cleaned up. All right. Next up. I'm going to, I'm going to move up the approval of the outdoor seating in the Acton Plaza because I believe these gentlemen are waiting here. And I don't want to put them through the community preservation and our other discussions. So, I'm going to, I have, I'm going to exert my chairman's authority. I appreciate you people being patient. I know this has run long tonight, but, all right. Gentlemen, why don't you introduce yourself to start off with?
Brian Levy from Beverage and Diamond Council to the Acton Plaza.
Keith Haig with Eden's, owners of the Acton Plaza.
Okay. All right, well, just to kind of put a ring around this, I don't know if the, oh, here he is. He was sitting over there, weren't you? I lost you in the crowd. Anyway, perhaps if you wouldn't mind, Roland, would you get up and kind of outline what the issue here was and what we're looking at this evening? Thank you.
When Eden's came to us to renovate their plaza, they came to you, to the board, for a site plan amendment. And on that site plan amendment, on the plans, they included an outdoor seating area in the upper plaza, I always forget whether it's Acton 1 or 2, but the one on Main Street side, narrowed down some of that free-for-all parking area and created a pedestrian space. That was shown on the plan, it was approved as part of the site plan amendment, and it was during the time of the building permit that Board of Health Director became aware of the seating and he started asking the question, does this trigger or is this restaurant seating and does that require a sewer privilege fee or not? And then the discussion went on from there about, you know, how this was always just public seating and so forth. And so the proposal here tonight is that you, the Board of Selectmen, in the capacity of the sewer commissioners, endorse that, that notion that this is public outdoor seating, that anybody can go to, you know, as it has been memorialized in the site plan decision, and that therefore no sewer privilege fees would be assessed for that outdoor seating.
Thank you. I think in lieu of, or in light of trying to move this process along since we spent a particular long time with the Makaha, we've gotten, subsequently, we got a memo from Doug, Doug Halli, the Health Director, relative to this outdoor seating. He was the one who had originally pushed back, saying that if it was outdoor seating connected to a restaurant, then that restaurant had a responsibility for sewer use permits. Now, that's not the right term, but we all know what I mean. But he has since kind of reversed himself. He's looked at the law more closely. He said that because it's not specifically connected to any particular restaurant there, it's not fenced off, it is in fact public seating, much like the benches that they have further down, more towards the liquor store. I think that we could probably dispense with this quickly unless somebody has some issues. Any questions or, yeah, Peter?
This doesn't, I don't have an issue with that. I just have a quick question. I was sitting there actually with Janet a few months ago and people were smoking. And actually, the person spit on the sidewalk, which I'm kicking myself for not having throttled the person, but.
Remember, don't do anything, you don't want to be on the front page of the Globe.
This is probably for the Board of Health, but how does the smoking prohibition, it's within so many feet of the building, isn't it? Or does it apply to that seating area?
It doesn't. You know, unless you're LEED certified, there's a specific 25-foot distance requirement, if you're LEED certified, that doesn't apply to our building.
I can make a motion.
All right, have at it. Let Franny.
Does that mean we are incapable of saying no smoking there?
Yeah, but this has to do with, this has to do with the searing. This has nothing to do with the rest of the conditions. So, my motion is that we, sitting as the sewer commissioners, find that the outdoor seating at the Acton Plaza Shopping Center is not an intensification of use as defined by the Sewer Assessment Bylaw Section D10-5 and does not require the imposition of a sewer privilege fee. Second.
And we have a second? All right, any more discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Sorry to make you wait so long.
No, no problem, thank you.
It's looking so easy.
You were obviously here for the important one, so be sure to tell, not your average Joes, we're serious here, you know? All right. Okay. I believe the CPC one is up next, is it not? Yes. So, the next one is the Community Preservation Committee Application Reviews and Orders of Priority. So, to the original list that we had, I'm going to turn it over to the Mr. Manager over there so he can spleen it.
Yes, Community Preservation Committee, as you may recall, when we, the board had heard and reviewed seven applications that were generated by town departments for consideration under the Community Preservation Act. And that was really an offshoot of our budget process through the fall. The board prioritized those seven projects which are attached in your package. My understanding is that two other applications came in, one from the Historic Commission that requests that the, excuse me, I lost my place here, that the Forest Cemetery applied to be on the National Register of Historic Places. And that project request is $7,000 for CPC funds. The other is the usual open space set aside and that request is $400,000. So, Community Preservation Committee asked the board to consider reprioritizing, taking into consideration those two other projects. So we have passed out three-by-five cards so that we can do our usual handy-dandy, list your top five items, and we'll compile.
We just, we just list top five?
Yeah, just like we always do.
Because we have seven, well, I counted, I have seven cards. I didn't know if there was a new method.
Well, we figured you'd make a few mistakes on the way, so.
So, we can list our top, all of our choices on one card, right? Okay.
I know Mr. Clower's here, if anybody wants information about the Forest Cemetery.
I do, I do have one question about it, and I appreciate you coming in, Bill. One of the concerns, and I think it was answered, but I just want to make sure, one of the concerns of this designation is that it will prevent us from doing something to the cemetery in future years because we need to put in a new grave section or something like that, and this designation will restrict us from doing that. I'll be long dead, it won't matter, you'll be long dead, it won't matter, but for the future generations.
You may want to get buried.
Turn on the microphone first, though.
Okay. This cemetery has, is full. This is a distinction compared to Mount Hope, Woodlawn. We have not had an interment in there in 60 years. And I don't see any way that we're going to be able to do anything there in the future. Part of the problem with this cemetery is that it goes back to a period of time that the town probably had no control over it. It was a first-come, first-served issue and, you know, they just put them along in rows.
I believe it's first-come, last-served.
But I honestly don't see how we could ever put any more graves in there. We have 96.
What about if they picked up properties adjacent to it? Because if that became part of the cemetery, like there's a, there's a house there that's condemned in that area, I don't know if it's adjacent to it.
It's not quite that adjacent.
Okay.
It's, you know, it's quite a ways away from there, but I don't see that it would ever make a big difference. The intent of this is to prevent federal monies from being used to, for projects that would hinder the cemetery.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Mr. Clower, can you speak to some of the people, some of the people that are buried there? Because I know that was part of why you wanted.
They can't speak for themselves.
It's a weird question, but that's part of why you want it on the National Register. And I remember from our meeting, it sounded very interesting, like there are potentially a number of Revolutionary War veterans.
Yes, we do. I believe we have eight Revolutionary War dead there, as well as some of our first selectmen.
So maybe we just leave it open for future selectmen burials.
There you go.
You know, we can, we can always scatter ashes.
Kind of like a military cemetery, you know? Yeah, Peter.
You also explained to the CPC that the, as I understood, that the Cemetery Commission had an issue with this the last time you tried to bring this forward, and you don't know where they are now. Could you just talk about that?
I know exactly where we are now with this, yes. When we originally applied for funds, we were looking to do all three cemeteries. And for the people who have been on the board for a while that, you know, went through this approval process once, we did get the okay to do it. The problem was, we had never gone to the Cemetery Commissioners. And when finally they got word of it, they were alarmed because it had not been done initially. So this time, we have hopefully put the cat behind the horse and we're proceeding with caution, but certainly, I know as a Cemetery Commissioner, we voted, all three of us voted to proceed forward with this cemetery. One of the other problems that we had in the past was restrictions. And we, this is sort of a test to see whether there really is a lot of restriction on a National Register property affecting cemeteries.
Just a piece of information, you already know this, we have about a $400,000 gap between available funds and requests for funding. That includes not just the towns project, but private projects, so we're going to have to make some cuts somewhere in the process, but that'll be happening over the next month.
Okay.
Mr. Manager, just for clarification, we're ranking these one to nine, one being our highest priority?
No, that's the golf.
So what we've done is just do your top five and they kind of sort themselves out.
Do our top five?
Right. I mean, that's what we usually do with our goal setting when we have 30-something goals, right?
But our, okay.
And the others will fall into the rhythm of it.
Something that it's, you know, okay, but with number one being my highest priority, or number five?
To make my math easier, number.
Number five being my highest priority.
Right, right. Unless you like golf, where the lowest would be the best score.
Wait, 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 clear up. Five is high?
Just do one, two, three, four, five.
I'm going one through five with one as my top.
Right, one is four, right. Don't worry about the points, I'll deal with those.
Okay, you know me in numbers, I don't want to get overly confused. All right. By the way, I think that if an historic registry person were here, she would be able to say that, that being on the registry doesn't restrict the municipality's ability to do stuff with the land, but it makes it eligible for funding and all sorts of good stuff.
I just, I just want to make sure.
But it also, I mean, it also sort of emphasizes the historic significance. And that particular cemetery is really a lovely place, a very nice final resting spot. And yeah, I would like to walk through and look at all the historical people who are buried there. Not them, but their stones. the lighting that they talked about when we were, when they originally, remember, they were also going to do that solar lighting along there, but the application no longer includes that.
Right, it's just going to be like the gating, right.
Just in case people were voting for it, for solar lighting.
Now, was that Mike's recommendation?
And while you're, while you're calculating all this stuff, what I'm going to do is I'm going to start discussing the item four, which I asked to be on here. When we originally had set up the committee for the active nursing service, we had the seven main players that were going to be there. Whereas all of these people are professionals and could likely not be able to be there on a regular basis, what I'm proposing is adding four alternates to the active nursing service. An alternate being someone who could vote in lieu of a regular member not being there in order to make quorum. Yes, Chaz?
I would suggest you call them. So that it's consistent with many of the other committees and would add less confusion.
I'm going to, I'm going to ask, I'm going to lean into the town manager here. I think we had this conversation many moons ago about the difference between an associate and an alternate. It goes beyond just a title. One implies that they can in fact vote in the absence of a voting member. One implies that they cannot. They're kind of like a junior member who, if an opening comes up, they can be escalated to a full member.
It seems to me that you changed the charter or the bylaw, wherever it's defined, to make it associates that can be assigned to take the place of a full member in, if you need them for a quorum.
Yes, okay. So then we will, in fact, when I make the recommendation or I, whoever positions this motion will use associates instead of alternates. I just, I ask only to make, for clarity's sake, because if we've got people who can't make it because they're working and, we don't want the thing to come to a standstill, we want it to move forward, so.
I mean, that's the way we use associates right now.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
You know, to make quorum and to vote.
Yep.
But obviously, if there's a longstanding issue with somebody not being able to attend any of the meetings, then the person should step down and we'll just appoint somebody to take his place.
Oh, no, it's just more, more periodic.
The only committee that has alternates is now is HTC, because they have a bylaw that says they have alternates.
Right.
Back in the days, and we still have in the handbook, they talk about alternates and associates, and interestingly, they don't explain the difference. They just say committees that have alternates and committees that have associates. And when I first started, I thought. And when I first started, I thought, what the hell is the difference?
Right.
That's as good as a handbook that doesn't explain.
What's the difference? What's the difference?
Yeah, and then I found out, and eventually we got rid of the difference. So, you know.
All right. So anyway, that's my reasoning behind it.
And sorry, we, five members?
No, four additional.
No, 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 what's the current, but we?
Seven.
Seven members, and then there'd be four additional.
And I want to add four associates.
It looks like six appointments.
Yes, well, they're still, the VCC is still interviewing.
Okay.
But what we'd like to do is, if we can get the six appointed, we've got a quorum, they can start working, and then we can add players as they come along. So.
So I'll move that we, I'll move that we add four associate positions to the Nursing Service Task Force.
All right. We have a motion by Peter, second by Katie. Any more discussion?
Been called everybody else tonight, so.
My mind is gone. All right. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, thank you.
Peter's.
Peter says he doesn't count. All right. So Charlie, you then can forward names for those positions as well. All right. The FY budget discussion, FY '16 budget discussion.
FY.
What? I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Manager. Do we want to, are you still working? Are you still working?
Yeah. Should we do the consent?
We'll do the consent agenda, we'll come back to you. All right. So, as we always do with the consent agenda, if in fact there's something that you want to have discussion about, please say hold, and we'll come back to that afterwards. So, item number seven, initial street acceptance documents, Engineering Department. Number eight, request for refunds, Building Department, 25 through 27 School Street, and Vivant Solar and Dolphin Insulation. Number nine, committee appointment, Joseph Holmes, Associate Member, Land Stewardship Committee. Number 10, committee appointment, Paula Goodwin, Full Member, Conservation Commission. Number 11, committee appointments for Act of Nursing Service Task Force, Charles Cadillac, Ellen Feinsand, Adrian Hancock, Brenda Gowing, Pam Harding Barrett, and Howard Sussman. I'll hold that. I have to, I think I have to abstain. I have an in there.
Why?
All right. Committee appointment, Cameron Cousins, Green Advisory Board Associate Member. Oh, I'm sorry. Cameron Cousins, Green Advisory Board Appointment, and also as an Associate Member of the Sidewalk Number 13, committee appointment, Adam Hoffman, from alternate member. Now we have an alternate to full member of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
That's what they call them. It's very, yeah. The chairman calls it, it's an associate.
All right. Committee appointment, Nancy Gerhart, Full Member, Recreation Commission. Number 15, committee appointment, Senior Center Study Committee, Chris Hamilton, Mimi Flannery, Michelle Holmberg, and Peter Ashton. Number 16, accept gift Recreation Department from Life Care Center of Acton totaling $500 for support of summer concert series. Number 17, accept gift Recreation Department, Acton Ford, $250 to support the 2015 Summer Concert Series. Number 18, accept gift Recreation Department, Levitt Law Group, gift $250 to support the summer series. Number 19, accept gift Recreation Department, Baron Chiropractic and Wellness Center, for $50 to support the summer concert series. Number 20, accept gift Recreation Department, Acton Medical Associates, $200 to support the summer concert series. Number 21, accept gift Recreation Department, Roach Brothers Supermarket, $2,500 to support the summer concert series. Number 22, accept gift to the Act of Nursing Service from Angela DeAndrea in the amount of $20. Number 23, accept gift to Act of Nursing Service enclosed gift from Elizabeth Eldridge in the amount of $250 in memory of David Eldridge. Number 24, accept gift to Act of Nursing Service, gift for Robert L. Watson in the amount of $50. Item number 25, one-day alcoholic beverage license, Church of the Good Shepherd, January 31st, 2015. Number 26, request for disposal of obsolete items, Act of Memorial Library. And finally, 27, accept gift Police Department Digital Federal Credit Union for $2,000 for use on the youth program. All right. I'm going to vote the one that I held, the committee appointments for the Act of Nursing Service first, and then we'll go back and do the rest. If that's all right.
Is Pam's name spelled right? It should be T.
Should be what?
Should it be Harding, or am I wrong?
I think it's.
Yeah, it's Harding with a T.
Oh, okay.
No problem.
Good catch, though.
Yes. We work with her, we.
I fixed Barrett.
Yeah, I never know how many Rs and Ts are in there, and I spell wrong all the time.
Anyway, so I would.
Move to approve item 11. Second.
All right. We have approval by Janet, second by Katie. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. All abstentions, aye.
Move to approve items 7 through 10 and 12 through 27. Second.
All right.
With the note that thank you to all of these businesses in town.
That's what I wanted.
Same, Janet made the motion, Katie second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right.
All right.
So, we are now back to the results, if we have them. Drum roll, please.
Wow. Last night was the Golden Globes, and tonight we have this. This is so exciting. Number one, with 21 points, is the Aspet River Rail Trail easement acquisition. Number two, with 17 points, was the open space set aside. Number three, with 13 points, is the narrow safety improvements. Number four, with 12 points, the narrow picnic pavilion restroom. Number five, with five points, is the skate park expansion. Number six, with four points, the irrigation wells at the Arboretum and Morrison Farms. Number seven, with two points, is the National Register of Historic Places for the Cemetery. And the boardwalk, fern boardwalk replacement and the water chestnut removal program, got no considerations.
This time?
This time, right.
So you're good, right? We'll forward that to the CPC.
Yeah, we have a meeting Thursday, so.
I'll write fast, yes.
All right, thank you. Now, yes?
Could I? We have a Finance Committee meeting tomorrow. I wrote, I was writing feverishly as you were talking. I think I missed one or two. What's the very, very last one?
There were two that received no consideration this time.
I mean, the last one you mentioned.
The last one that got any point, you mean?
Well, the National Register is the last one I have.
Yeah, for the West Cemetery, right.
Right.
Right. That was, it got two points.
And what was after that?
But after that is the boardwalk?
After it was the fern boardwalk and the water chestnut removal. And neither of those got any points.
Okay. The question I have is, could you put it in an email and send it out so that I can?
I have to go to the dentist first thing tomorrow, then I'll do it, okay?
Thank you.
I'll be able to type, probably not talk.
Getting it out of you is like pulling teeth, you know?
I recorded it, I can send you an email.
Yeah. Roland Borden is on the CPC, he should get, I assume he'll send it to the whole CPC. So Roland will get a copy of what he sends out in an email.
Can I ask a question? Mike?
Yes.
What is, what's the result of this? Or maybe I'll ask you, Peter, to the CPC. I mean, how does, what authority do we have in terms of the CPC? Like, is this just our advice?
This is our advice. We have no authority. They voted.
And we're also only voting on the town projects. There's a lot of private ones as well that we don't.
So they have private ones that they integrate in as well.
But when they, but last year, we voted, when the CPC put together their recommendation, we voted on the Warren article, we voted on each. Yeah. We voted to recommend or not each of the various.
But that's, it'll be refined by them because there's still.
We don't have their recommendation by then, right.
That's the next step. Yeah, we can only recommend or not.
All right. I just lost my agenda.
Budget.
Hmm? Oh, budget. Sixty, I had budget. Dang it, budget.
Okay. As we all remember, we had Budget Saturday this past Saturday.
Yes, we remember it. Like it was two days ago.
It just seems like it was. And just to remind the board that under the town charter, the board has to transmit to the Finance Committee a recommended budget 60 days prior to town meeting or by February 6th. We have one regularly scheduled selectmen meeting left before February 6th, that being two weeks from tonight, the 26th. And I know, you know, there was a lot of information, a lot of things to absorb Tuesday or Saturday morning, so I don't really, you know, expect too much of a discussion tonight. But I think our next discussion should be, you know, pretty substantive. And also, as I explained to the outset on Budget Saturday, the issue of the Middlesex County Retirement Assessment, we're still working. We don't have a resolution on that at the moment. However, as I mentioned Budget Saturday, we have, are preparing a list of cuts if in fact we would have to absorb that $600,000. And I think the board would probably want to see what those cuts are. So we can have that ready for the 26th. I guess my main question is whether the board feels they can have discussion and voter recommended budget on the 26th, or whether we should consider a special meeting sometime before February 6th.
Yes, Katie.
Part of me feels like maybe we should book a special meeting, and if we don't use it, we don't use it. And then I would also say, I think two of the bigger things that came up or that drove a lot of the questions on Saturday were around the Economic Development Director person and the Director of Land Use Management. So I'm just wondering if we can have perhaps more in-depth presentation on both of those on the 26th.
A value proposition, as Mr. Mullen would say.
Yeah, just, you know, something a little more detailed, not, you know, just some additional information presentation, also for the purposes of the public. And then also the pay-as-you-throw, because I know we talked about that a long time ago, but I don't know that we've really talked about it.
Well, I mean, the interesting thing about pay-as-you-throw is, you know, it's more of how the solid waste operation would be financed as opposed to a budget.
Right.
So as I mentioned, I think on Budget Saturday, we are going to have a public forum March 4th, if that's a Wednesday. And I know Finance Committee has also requested more information. So, you know, I'm not sure we want to talk about it in regard to the budget as opposed to kind of a, you know, it's more of a lifestyle, so to speak.
No, I agree, yeah. But perhaps a presentation on that later, or just some more, I think there needs some more discussion of it.
If we're going to do something relative to make sure we have another meeting tucked in there, I'm going to recommend Friday, the 30th. And the reason why I say that is because the school committee, I believe, is going to be doing, oh, no, they're doing their Budget Saturday on that Saturday. So we're not going to have any time relative to the school budget review before we have to submit it.
Right, right.
Unless we call it on the 2nd.
But, well, I mean, we could meet on the 2nd. I mean, that is a Monday, it's an off Monday. Can't necessarily.
Well, we could do it again.
Yeah, I might not be able to guarantee this room that night, but, you know, we can find someplace else. Probably PSF or something. I mean, the big issue will be, you know, in terms of ALG, and ALG is meeting this Thursday, is our number will be in the spreadsheet. I don't know if the superintendent's recommended budget will be in the spreadsheet that ALG sees this Thursday or not. So, you know, probably the first ALG spreadsheet that has a meeting may be after that February 2nd, or after that school Budget Saturday, so we know where we are bottom line-wise. And, you know, then that's when kind of the fund begins at ALG, and we may have to bring back some, even if the board votes a budget, we may have to bring back some issues for reconsideration.
Yeah, I mean, we can defer as well. We don't have the information.
Right, right.
All right. So do we tentatively want to kind of earmark that Monday, the 2nd, so that we'll have better information? We can take a shot at it on the 26th.
Well, I think we should at least have discussion, and we can be prepared on the two issues that Katie has requested to discuss that. And then, you know, we'll see how far we can get, and if not, we can do the 2nd.
All right, I'll go over service.
Keep in mind that the 2nd's the day after the Super Bowl, after the Patriots win.
That's true.
How about that game, oh, boy.
It was a crazy game, yeah.
Great game.
I wasn't, I'm not a, I don't watch it, but because Brian kept pushing it, I went home, and the TV was on, and Jim was going to watch it. So I said, okay, it's just faded that I have to watch this game. And then I'm screaming at the TV.
Oh, it was a phenomenal game.
And I said, I don't care about this game, he says, you are, sure.
Yeah.
So we have a game plan.
What was that?
We have a game plan.
We have a game plan?
Yes.
All right, excellent.
So we're done?
No, we still have the selectmen's reports.
Oh, we're essentially done.
All right. So, let's see. Peter.
Let's see, the train station committee. The steel, the steel has arrived, and you should be seeing the headhouses going up pretty quickly. I understand it taking the steel right off of the trucks and using the cranes to wreck the headhouses. So the train station is moving along. You all saw the letter from the train station committee about Gordon Richards' property right next to the train station. He runs a concrete forms business there, has been doing it for years, is considering retiring, has been talking to the town a little bit about whether he would consider conveying the property to the town. I'm not sure he's fully made up his mind whether he's even going to retire or not, but I'm going to recommend that we get a little more proactive on that and try to meet with him and determine what his intentions are and whether the town might have an opportunity to purchase that property. SATSAC is proposing that the property be used for further parking for the station. They got a plan with about 100 additional parking spaces in there, and an analysis that the fees from the parking could help, would pay for the purchase of the property, possibly. So I know other people in town you talk to would suggest that it might be appropriate for housing. It certainly fits into the state's smart growth concept, so, but it is a prime piece of property, and I think the town ought to at least explore the possibility of acquiring it. The Green Advisory Board met. They will be moving forward with proposals from both the town and the schools for another round of funding under the Green Communities Act. Proposals are due March, I think March 20th or March 22nd. So it's going to be a little tight to try to get those in. I haven't seen what exactly the schools, the town, or the town's proposals are. I know Dean talked about the town's proposals at Budget Saturday, but they're still in the conceptual stage. Sidewalk Committee met. They're continuing to evaluate sidewalks throughout town. Actually, the town started the sidewalk on High Street along the Bridle Path there, up from Parker Street heading toward Main Street. And the weather got bad, so that had to be stopped, but I assume they'll pick that up as soon as the weather improves. Cory York is coming to meet with the Green Advisory Board on Wednesday to talk about complete streets policy and get input from the Sidewalk Committee about possible bike paths routes through town. And let's see, I think that pretty much completes my report.
Mr. Chair, just in regard to the Richards' property, I have gotten a proposal for an appraisal for that property, so we're going to move ahead with it.
Start one.
Unfortunately, the appraiser we usually use apparently has done it for Mr. Richards, so I had to find somebody else this time, but we're moving ahead with that appraisal.
I'm sure we can find another one. And the only thing I would suggest perhaps is maybe reach out to TAC. TAC maybe want to be at that meeting with the Sidewalk Committee and Cory, relative to bike paths and whatnot, because that was one of their. to bike paths and, and whatnot, because that was, one of their, uh, goals was to connect the two bike trails.
Yes, the chairman.
Okay, just, I want to make sure that they're part of the discussion, is the reason why I bring it up. K-Tay.
Um, now Paul's leaving right as my trash talked the school committee, that's a joke, that's a joke for everybody, um, okay, so the, um, Memorial Library Board of Trustees met in December, they've pu- they have posted the position for the Assistant Director, I, Marsha spoke about that on Saturday, that their, um, their Assistant Director has retired, and they are, um, working on continuing to implement their long-range plan specifically around getting job descriptions in place for all of their positions, and they're making headway on that, um, and then they also voted to make some changes on the circulation policy regarding the length of time that you can loan, um, TV series, so it's different than if you're taking out a movie versus TV series, because one takes longer to watch. Um, I went to the Eagle Scout Court of Honor for Matt Phillips and Mark Wiggins, which was a very nice event, Senator Eldridge also attended, um, the Recreation Commission met, they were preparing for two of their presentations upcoming to the CPC, they've since happened, and that was to discuss the narrow security and the skate park, interestingly, on the skate park, they, um, have had some indication from Boxborough that Boxborough, uh, may be interested in helping to fund some of this, and now that Bo- I know, and now that Boxborough has, um, adopted the CPC, there, there might be some potential funding from there, which would be great, so, um, and they also were, uh, visited by three potential new members, they've got two open committee positions and two associate positions, um, as you saw, we voted on Nancy tonight, and we're hopefully going to have another person, um, for the, hopefully, our next meeting. Um, the school committee met twice, I missed one of their meetings, at their recent meeting in January, uh, I guess it was last week, uh, they had a report from the auditor, their outside auditor come in, um, nothing too crazy there, um, the big, bigger issue, I think, for us, and that was discussed that night, was that the superintendent presented his preliminary FY16 budget, and, um, they would want me to underscore that is a preliminary FY16 budget, I sent all of you the, um, budget sheet that was made available at that meeting, and I believe is, um, also available online in their added packet, uh, their FY16 preliminary assessment, um, for Acton is either, depending on how you look at it, a 7.2 or 8% increase over FY15, um, they are calling it a 7.2% increase because they're including the funding, the money that we paid for in the side letter for their Middlesex retirement under, in their FY15 base budget, so it lowers what their FY16, what the increase is.
Sounds less bad.
Um, they, um, it was presented as essentially a level services budget, they have reduced to FTEs, um, but then added in 3.8 FTEs, so it's a net increase of, of one, well, they're different posi- you know, different kinds of positions, um, so it's a net increase of 1.8 FTEs, um, I'll save too much of my editorial comment for later, but just preliminarily looking at these numbers, even with our budget coming in at about, you know, 2% increase, this would, if this assessment sticks, we would have to use down most of, quite a bit of our reserves to pay for, um, both this budget and the municipal budget, so, or increase, um, property taxes above 2.5%, um, which I don't think is on anybody's radar at the moment. So, that is, again, their preliminary budget, they're going to have another presentation, I believe, at their next meeting, and then their big budget Saturday is on, uh, January, I think it's the 28th.
31st.
31st, is that the Saturday?
Yeah.
Okay, maybe their next meeting's the 28th, um, anyways, so that is the big news there.
Thank you, Janet.
Um, let's see, Acton Community Housing Corporation's meeting on the 22nd, and they'll be hearing a presentation of a proposed project, I don't know what it is, Water District is meeting tonight, they've been doing a lot of meetings when we're meeting, so I haven't been able to go to their meetings in a while, but we did all get the notice about, um, well, they'll be talking about the update, uh, doing an update about the South Acton Water Treatment Plant Project tonight, and as we learned last week from the District Director, Chris Allen, the pipe installation under the tracks on Parker's completed, so the detour and all the traffic disruption has ended, and I guess resurfacing scene will occur what in the spring. Conservation Commission, uh, met on the 7th, they're continuing their hearing on, about the arboretum improvements, so I wasn't surprised to see that person on, on, uh, on the road, asking about the signs for no parking. Um, the hearing unfortunately is not closed yet because they need more information about, uh, proposed stormwater management. The Design Review Board met the same night, so I was at both meetings, um, missing parts of both of them, but they weren't able to discuss my sort of revised version of their charge, uh, which I wanted to hear about so that I could then schedule a discussion for this committee, so, so they'll be talking about those, the design charge, uh, at their next meeting, and then after that, um, I'll try to get something on the BOS agenda. FINCOM met on December 23rd, and, in, in the spirit of the season, the chairman brought Christmas cookies, um, and was hoping that we would all eat them, everybody in the audience, all three of us would eat them, or, and, and his colleagues, but that, it didn't work out that way, there was, there was a presentation by Green Acton of the pay-as-you-throw smart proposal, uh, there were some good suggestions, uh, about addressing possible concerns people might have about the relative cost in comparison to the current transfer station arrangement, and also in comparison to private carriers, uh, because the concern would be that if you, you know, your pricing, so that you're chasing people to the private sector, that wouldn't help the transfer station, um, there was also discussion of the AB and the town preliminary fiscal 16 budget presentations, this was like eons ago, the 23rd, everything, a lot of stuff has changed, considerable discussion of the proposed meals tax, um, with some members expressing concern about tying the tax to, uh, the new hire of the Economic Development Officer, others saying, well, it's another tax, um, and finally Bob Evans, who also mentioned that he didn't care for the tying to a specific position, uh, put the tax in perspective, saying it would add 75 cents to a hundred dollar bill for a meal, so, and that kind of ended the discussion. Uh, the next meeting FINCOM is tomorrow, the Land Stewardship Committee met on the 16th, um, they formed a subcommittee to focus on parcel mapping, so that they can check out mapping software and update the maps on the website and in the paper manual, and, uh, it's interesting, because this is a group, a lot of outdoorsy men, principally men, also very good on computers, so, uh, they, they're really bonding on this whole mapping stuff, and, uh, it's probably, well, it's, it's good, and we have some very good members on that committee, they do a lot of work, and they're also good with computers and chainsaws, um, and, and, uh, some discussion of donated benches, uh, the need for proper installation and anchoring, uh, and also need for communications when, if and when benches are removed for some reason, so people don't get alarmed about it. Uh, the Water Resources Advisory Committee met on the 17th, their latest revised draft is supposed to be circulating at some point to the departments, I haven't seen it yet, but they'd especially like to hear from the Engineering Department, from which they hadn't gotten comments initially, and this is really old news, Regionalization Finance Oversight Subcommittee met on the 18th, just before the school committee meeting, um, Glenn Brand and the AB Finance Director Claire Genot were present, um, the committee, the subcommittee members sort of explained the mission of the subcommittee because they were both new to it, um, and, uh, just the purpose of the subcommittee to look at budget projections that the special town meeting heard about regionalization, and, and then also monitor budget development for consistency with those projections, that is, with savings, um, and also submit a brief report at, at town meeting, um, and Claire had some issues, she's trying to go through all the old paperwork and kind of, I guess, uh, rec- sort of rectify it anyhow, she was having some challenges, uh, she, she's very, I was talking to Marion Ashton, who said she's very nuts and bolts, she likes to tie things up, which is, I think, a very, very good thing, she was trying to substantiate some numbers that were estimates from the prior predecessor, and I think it was driving her crazy, but, um, in any event, the next meeting of that subcommittee is on, on the 27th, I did hang around after that, the last meeting, to hear, in the hopes of hearing the superintendent's budget presentation, the preliminary budget presentation, but after over an hour of discussion about the preschool spend programs, I just thought, okay, they're not going to get to it anytime soon, and of course, as soon as I left, I did, uh, and of course, since that meeting, um, the details of the proposed budget have come out, um, and finally, the Diversity Coalition has approved its final report on its 18 months of activities, it's going to be circulated by meals sometime this week, I am going to be dealing with town committees, and Rachel Sagan of the AB United Way will be handling, uh, community organizations, but I haven't been able to, I haven't heard from Rach- Rachel yet, but we want to get it out and move on, so.
Okay, Vani? Turn on your microphone, thank you.
The, as of December 15th meeting, I forgot to mention that I was interviewing candidates for the Senior Center Study Committee, and, um, I submitted the four that I had determined for sure, I had interviewed the people from the Council on Aging Board, um, there were three, at least three people interested from the Board of the Council on Aging, and only two are supposed to be on it, um, so I've since then finished interviewing and have made all the determinations, um, and so, pretty much, I just used seniority on the COA Board to determine who would be, actually be on the committee, but we're encouraging the third one to attend and participate, um, as much as possible. Um, it's a great group of people, it looks like, it was really fun interviewing all the members of the Senior Center Study Committee, and, um, it includes people that have worked in and out of senior centers and/or have other related interests, so I'm really looking forward to working on that, um, continuing to work toward an expanded senior center, presumably in a new location, based on the previous observations, um, I want to put on the agenda of a near-future meeting to revise the charge so that we can have some associate members on the Senior Center Study Committee, we have a diverse group in terms of age, ranging from someone in her twenties to some in their seventies and eighties, including at least one military veteran, some new to town committees, and some longtime committee participants, some relatively new residents in town, some very longtime residents, um, interest and experience among them include low vision, technology, fitness, diversity, data analysis, we'll have at least one person from the Council on Aging Board who is, I mentioned that, who's not a formal part, um, we hope more people will join the effort, including some from the Chinese or Indian communities, because both of these communities are of substantial size, um, whose needs we want to be sure to include in the plans for the senior center, so we're still working on that, um, there was a Council on Aging Board meeting on January 5th, but I didn't attend because I celebrated my aunt's 102nd birthday at the same time, um, January 7th, um, I participated in a meeting of the Lowell Regional Transit Authority and UMass Lowell, the two groups are trying to cooperate to improve transportation within and to, um, UMass Lowell, because parking is really tight for them, no matter how much parking they build, sounds like a train station, um, and students and staff tend to fill buses coming from Lawrence, apparently there's, even in Lawrence, there's competition between taxi companies that want to bring people from their homes to the bus that will get them to Lowell, so that they can then get a shuttle to the school, and I know that there are people around here, there are families that need transportation to UMass Lowell and Middlesex Community College campuses, so I was very interested in that discussion, but right now, they're really focusing on the, within Lowell step, um, but it was a very encouraging, positive group, I think most people thought it was going to be about three people, and it was actually 13 people, um, 12 men and me, um, which is sort of interesting, to note the lack of women working in transportation and public safety at a university, or on the Board of the Lowell Regional Transit Authority, um, and it was really good to hear that the previous day, um, the North Middlesex Council of Governments Planning Group had Crosstown Connect present at it, um, and so I'm really happy to hear about that participation and visibility, and Crosstown Connect's new director, Scott Sadekis, wrote letters of comment on the Coordinated Public Transit Human Services Transportation Plan, we mentioned at the last meeting, this is really important, um, to comment on the plan because it makes you eligible for the, um, grants, the coordinated grants that help people with disabilities and reverse commute, um, and low income, and so, we've used those grants before to help with getting a driver for Roadrunner and things like that, and so it's really important that those comments came out, and I was really happy to see that Crosstown Connect's director, um, put out comments on not only our Boston Metropolitan Planning Organization's plans, but also the planning group north of us, North Middlese- and NIMCOG, North Middlesex Council of Governments, and the one west of us, Montechuset Regional Planning Commission, or MRPC, um, because they had to be in by December 30th, and I was really happy to see that Crosstown Connect is working for us in that way, um, I, it's hard to copy the text from the PDF of those letters, but I included it in my notes that I'm going to give to Lisa, but I can also send you the PDF, and I don't know if you can get a PDF into the notes, but, um, Crosstown's letter of comments. January 8th, as Janet said, was the Acton-Boxborough Diversity Coalition, and, um, I might have spaced out, did you mention the Martin Luther King Breakfast?
No, she did not.
Um, it's Monday, January 19th, at 9:00 AM, at Congregation of Beth Elohim at 133 Prospect Street in Acton, um, did you, do you remember the speaker or speakers? There were also some kids that were doing some interesting projects, do you?
Well, there, the speaker, the keynote speaker is a woman named An Sawyer, who's Southeast Asian, who leads a, a community organization in Worcester, um, she's from Vietnam, so she'll be talking, I probably, about her history there, but, and also what she's been doing in the community of Worcester, but, um, there are a couple of kids that one of the organizers, Sal Lopes, was hoping to line up, and one of the, one of the two youths is an 11-year-old girl who apparently was the one who organized, there was a vigil, Black Lives Matter in Westford recently, 11-year-old girl, I forget what her name is, Leica, and then, it's, well, anyhow, but 11-years-old, and so, he was going to try to get her to, to attend and, and say a few words, but I don't know if that's going to happen, so.
Um, and the No Place for Hate program, which Sal Lopez and Marge, Marge Kennedy and others have kept going for a long time now, is being phased out by the Act, the Anti-Defamation League, and so, because they have some similar but otherwise-named programs, and so, that was a really-
So it's going to be No Place for Anti-Defamation?
No Place, we're, we're going to no longer be a No Place for Hate town because they won't exist, but, um, the work will be carried on by the Acton-Boxborough Diversity Coalition, which has yet to, at our next meeting, to really determine our, um, next goals, and also how we'll be hosted, we're trying to work that out, um, attended Budget Saturday, and it was my first as selectman, and I was incredibly impressed with the skill and, I would say, art of Steve Ledoux and all the department heads at putting together a budget that, that works, um, so thank you to you and the Finance Department, um, Cemetery Commission's meeting this Wednesday, and Open Space didn't meet, that's all.
All right, well, I had the Cable Advisory Board, couldn't meet Quorum, but we have subsequently added somebody, so the likelihood of that happening is not going to happen again, I hope, um, had two meetings of the Metropolitan Planning Organization, the MPO, uh, since our last meeting, and this is kind of a composite of the two meetings. Every four years, the Federal Highway Administration and the Federal Transit Administration are required a law to review the metropolitan planning process conducted by the Boston Region MPO and its partners in order to certify, they're carrying out the process in accordance with all applicable federal requirements, the review is conducted, and the Boston MPO passed, um, the certification process is to ensure that federal monies are appropriately spent on transportation problems in the greater Boston area, they also discuss tools for evaluating future projects and cost assumptions, geographic equity within the region, and social justice, um, they presented Transportation Improvement Plan, the tip, Second Amendment, with the foreshortened comment period 15 days, rather than the typical 30 days, because they need to get it in place, and they lost an entire meeting because of this, um, um, federal audit, if you will, and, um, at the most recent meeting, uh, Crosstown Connect was mentioned at the APO, uh, the MPO, as a model for future consideration in other areas of the MPO, so, and they, they spoke very highly of it, they had- spoke very highly of it, they had a presentation on it, and, uh, and not by someone from Crosstown Connect, so it's, it's spreading, it's spreading. We can make this into something, uh, very, very, uh, important in this state, so. That's all I have to report for my selectmen's report, but I do have two other items that I want to discuss with the, the Board of Selectmen, just as an FYI, if you will. The town report is due, and so, I'm gonna be sending you something in the mail, or in, by email, that will identify your respective boards that have not supplied- You gotta be the bad guys, exactly, so. So I want you to contact the chair or the vice chair and nudge them along, we need to get these in, we have a deadline for doing this report.
It's not as bad as writing them.
Hmm?
Being the bad guy isn't as hard as writing them.
Yeah, and some, well, I have to write one, too, so. Uh, for this board, I forgot all about it. Uh, so the town report, I'll, I'll let you know which ones, 'cause some have already submitted them, it's just the ones that are laggards here, so we can give them a little tweak and get them back on board. Uh, the other is the Town Manager's Performance Review, we're, it's that time again. I briefly mentioned this at the, at-
Yeah, and I had the same reaction.
And she had the same reaction, right. Uh, for those who have not done this before, uh, essentially, I'm gonna be sending you a blank, I'll send you last year's as well, so you have some, uh, relative document to look at. We're going to be submitting our completed review, not to anyone on this board, not to Steve, but to the, our town council. Town Council then will compile all of these and redistribute them on the day that we do the performance review, so that's the first time you'll see everybody's comments, because it has to be discussed in an open meeting. And, and Steve will then get a chance to, to comment if he wishes, but it's a very awkward process, it's ugly, the state should be pilloried on this one, but it's the way it is, so.
But the contract is up to date, right, or do we need to revisit that? We have to re, we have to extend it, we usually extend it a year? Well, well, what your mood is.
I believe, I believe he was talking about restructuring his contract so we could come in under the cap and get more players. Oh, no, no, that was a different conversation.
When I, when I joined the board, they still had this form, and you had to have everybody agree on a rating, and we started, I mean, I think the compilation, it started maybe with you, or did it start with, anyhow, but we sort of fine-tuned it when I was chairman, and then, and then, and then one, one year when we started, one year we started to talk about how to condense all of this, and one, and Steve said, well, actually, I find having the five different evaluations very useful, because I know all you guys, and I, you know, so, and we just said, oh, good.
Yeah.
That's it, we're done. We don't have to spit it all into that little form.
So, so therefore, you'll, that'll be coming as well, so just to give you a heads up, and, um, I can answer questions for one of you. But, but I can't answer questions for two of you, but Town Council can answer any questions that you might have, so it's, uh-
But I think what you should do is come and talk about compensation and contracts and executive-
We do it, we do it separately.
That's separately, 'cause we do a separate-
And then we, and then we have to come back into public session to vote it, whatever it is that we decided, so.
So, anyway.
I just have one other quick thing about the Green Advisory Board. Six months ago, we got a letter from a statewide environmental organization asking us to send a letter, the town to send a letter to Governor Baker, asking him to support, uh, solar energy projects. The Green Advisory Board actually signed that letter, and since they're an advisory board, they just wanted to be sure that the selectmen authorized them to send it out, so unless anybody has any objection, I'll just tell them to go ahead and send it, so.
I kinda, kinda took the lead on that and just made it happen.
Oh, okay. It was in the, I thought it was gonna be on the consent agenda, but it turned out to be in extra information of mail, so the letter's there.
Everyone had indicated that they didn't have a problem with it, it was just a, a more of the functional, get it out, so, I, I took it on myself as chair and just-
I like to see progress.
All right, that's what we, that's what we wanna hear, so.
Motion to adjourn.
So, yeah, do we have a second?
Second.
And, uh, any more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? All right, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Oh, yes, and, and, and things, things were icing up outside. Charlie, Charlie, we can't, we don't want you to be a customer of the nursing service. It was starting to ice up outside, so be very careful. We don't have much insurance.